Meeting of the Board of Custer County Commissioners to order. Let the record show today is December the 5th, 9 o'clock a.m.
And I, Clint and I, we're here on time.
I wonder if Mr. Lynn agree would care to lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Without a problem.
Thank you, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. You know, I suppose the bigger deal we make about it, people are going, well, I'm not sure.
I never thought about it until Nora brought it up, and then I thought, you know.
Nineteen eighty-six on, I told my kids, you better recite the pledge.
The way they always did.
And it's really hard in a room full of people who, because you stand out, and I understand stand out a lot, but now I was outstanding in my field.
You were outstanding, we've always said.
Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Candace.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And then Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. Amendments to the agenda?
I don't have anything. You gonna invent something for us?
Well, it seemed like we talked about something yesterday, but...
What did we talk about? I don't think so.
I was just looking at these new, see if we're still... If we get to it, we may, we may delete the weed grant application. I got an email this morning, didn't have time to really totally digest it, but I think he was pulling that grant application back, but we could still approve it, and then if he decides not to do anything, we can, so we'll leave it on for now. Okay, good. Nothing, Commissioner Prince?
No, sir.
Audience introduction.
Jackie Bucus.
Bob Jolly with the airport. Glenn McGree, airport.
Thank you, welcome, glad to have you guys. I don't believe we have any minutes to approve Commissioner items from since yesterday. Commissioner Candace?
Yeah, Big Deal was the CenturyLink meeting that we announced yesterday, and it was a workshop, basically, with just the CenturyLink guys and D-Dot, Dot, C-Dot, not D-Dot. I thought it was really good. It was a very good brainstorming session. The C-Dot guys had a lot to offer, because they've been through a lot of thinking on things like this. There's program in the state that this, Bob Pfeifer, who is the director for C-Dot, for broadband issues and new strategic developments for it, and so he was the right guy, and he came up with a cool technology that I think everybody embraced to do the midterm fix on the system. We'll talk about that when they finalize how they're gonna do that, and we'll have a meeting on that, I think. We thought maybe the twentieth when they came back to refine that. And so it was very, very fruitful, and they had, C-Dot bought in a couple of experts, or one, I guess, we had a visitor as well, and then CenturyLink, so I thought it went really well.
Forest Service wasn't there?
No, Forest Service didn't come, and that's okay, because we, now that we know what kind of technology, we know how much Forest Service involvement there would be, and that's the next step, is to get those two guys in the next meeting. And then I did follow up with some strategic coordination on the strategic survey, and I did get a couple more comments to add to the survey. And so I'll say it again publicly, let's get on the survey, anybody that hasn't filled it out, get on the website and do it, or we'll get it into the stores here soon on hard copy.
So these new questions went into the one that's online?
Yes.
Already?
Yeah, yeah. The latest one I have in my hand, but all the others did, so everything should be current on it now, except for maybe a couple revisions, if there's some duplicative ones, you won't see it change at all.
And you're gonna get some hard copies around? Because I can put some in my office.
Yeah, we'll put them in the office, we wanna take them to the newspapers, we'll take them to the bowling alley and places like that.
Did we decide whether we can use the yearbook?
Oh, yeah.
Place to deposit them?
Yeah.
Put your survey here somewhere?
Yeah, I'll have to remember to unlock it.
Yeah, and we'll make an announcement, when we get all the locations identified, we'll put it in the newspaper.
Well, in spite of myself, I try not to be negative, I just filled that survey out.
Still, still...
It's a mess.
When we went, I worked hard on it, and she argued on all the points, except she did change some of the orders and some of the questions as well. But it is, and I kept, and she said, keep in mind, it is not, it's an opinion, it's not, and there's, and we'll have to see how she handles it, because it's not a thing you're gonna take statistic measurements and say, well, ten people wanted a brewery, and five wanted this. It's the process of pulling together, and then use the discussion parts, is where you pull out what you're looking for in the three meetings with the tiger team.
I was discouraged, I just finished taking it this morning, supposedly now that is the survey, it's posted.
Yeah.
So I don't know that we're gonna add anything more to it.
Depends on what we see here, but there may be another question.
Which would invalidate everybody that took the survey.
No, no, it won't, because it's not, remember, it's an opinion.
Well...
So it's okay. I mentioned the same thing to her, and we're gonna have, from my point of view, she does have the technique, and so we're gonna have to give her the benefit of that doubt until we get into the actual structure of getting a team to execute it, so we'll see how it plays out.
I mean, I figured every survey ever written was somebody's opinion. I don't get why they're calling it, well, it's just an opinion.
Tell you what I'll do, and I've talked to her about this, I think she needs to, we need to probably define the process a little better, how she's gonna do that publicly, either an article, or have her give a briefing here beforehand, or when we kick it off. Gotta have confidence in her, or it's, you know, it becomes us just doing it, we could do it ourselves.
Yeah, I'll go back and look at the original survey, but it hasn't changed.
It did.
Much. There's one question in there that was not in the original survey.
Yeah, and what she did, she combined a couple too.
I don't know, I took it, but...
Well, I'll have a talk with her again.
I mean, I just asked these guys a couple questions about some of the terms used and what they mean, and nobody...
So the workforce housing one that you were asking about is on that subject?
Yeah, but anyway, I don't wanna cast a pall over it, I just don't think that the recommendations that were given to her were certainly...
But see, they're...
Were included. Some of them were.
They were, and believe me, I've argued with her at length on them, and I saw some of her points, and she changed some of them, because of the way we discussed it. I've dealt with these kinds of things in the past, and really where the rubber meets the road is when you get the group that's gonna be arguing points to discuss it in depth, and she facilitates that, and then she uses the opinions as some of the background on, here's why I think, you know, what she thinks process-wise, it has nothing to do with whether she believes that that's the way Custer County oughta go or not, it's how the team believes.
I think we oughta just let the process go. The survey's already out. When I took it, I was thinking to myself also, well, I'm sure not sure what, I wasn't sure, the question wasn't defined well enough for me to answer the way I would like to. That was an issue for me, but that doesn't mean the process is a great...
No, I'm not challenging the process.
And on that point, that's a good point, I'm glad you brought it up, because what she pointed out there, that's the reason it's that way, is so that you give your thought, you say, well, you know, this is not the right question, here's what I think. She likes those answers like that, that's what it takes.
And I did, I answered what I really wanted to answer, as opposed to what the question asked.
Right, and she, her point is, then that means that's a meaningful person that gave us some thought, that had some thought with the experience behind it, as opposed to checking a box, well, this is close to what a, you know, looks like a good answer.
I'm not the expert.
That was her argument.
If that's the proper way to do it, I'm fine, it was when I was taking it, I was thinking to myself, gosh, I don't think I'm even answering this properly.
That's okay.
And not every question allowed extra input.
Right.
You didn't have any choice on some of those questions.
Right, and then she changed, but if you look, then she asked that question later in a different way, to get a different, see if the opinion changed, and that's why those, there's a couple questions like that. That's a technique that they use, we'll see, I mean...
Right, let's see that. I just have my opinion of the survey, I don't, I'm not questioning the whole process or the need, or...
No, I understand.
...or validity, or anything else, I just don't care.
And it's good to discuss it, oh, by the way, that's another point, if you, if you really feel strong about something being screwed up, it's wrong, and I hate this thing, she wants to hear that in the discussion, so you need that in order to pull out an overwhelming opinion that gets diversity of thought going, to get an answer that is a compromise, basically, but it actually gets to the heart of it better. So, you know, and it's based on everybody's background, you've got experience in taking surveys that are different than somebody else. So, so I, finally, that's why I went along with some of the changes that she didn't do, because I'll tell you what, we had a couple inputs that, they said, I've never seen, this, this, are we paying somebody to write this thing? You know, that's how hard that person was on it, this isn't a real survey.
I feel, we need to trust her expertise and her professionalism, something that, I can't speak for the rest of you, but I don't have, so if, you know, we hire an expert to design this, I would've written it differently, but she's the expert.
She's the expert.
So I'm letting it go with her.
And she is not looking at it from any point of view, other than what that data's...
I understand, she's not trying to skew it on way or another, I got you.
And she's got the, you look at the experience, I mean, she's been in big cities, little cities, in companies with a lot of years of doing this, so let's, let's trust her a little bit. It's hard to do, because I have my bias too, you know, it's hard to let... All right, thanks, Tom, for bringing it up, and don't, don't, don't ever think, oh, and I know you'll always lose your opinion, but that's good.
Yeah, we're gonna try to reserve the concentration down Cliff Lane for December the 20th at 3:00, for a meeting with C-Dot, CenturyLink.
A little early, I'm sorry. I will not be able to be there, it turns out.
I think...
We've got a dental appointment in Denver before we head to Texas.
I think Forest Service and, I think all the players will be at that meeting, or at least will be in town.
Well, the ones that are gonna be important in the, in that decision, so we'll make sure they're invited, we're hosting the meeting, so...
And then obviously, yesterday afternoon, we had our Justice Center committee meeting, and, or moving forward with a request for, a proposal for RFP, sorry, to try to get a plan put together to move forward on our new Justice Center, so, all three of us sat in on that meeting, other than that, that's it, for me.
I think we agreed to, and then once we understand it, then we start advertising, so to speak, or educating everybody on what, how we're gonna proceed on that.
Right.
It was not a surprise.
Yeah, we had a little issue yesterday, that's why I kept leaving that meeting of Kelly's office and Lori's office lost electricity, and so we searched high, well, we searched high, finally we searched low, twice, went in the basement, found a breaker box down there, but that was not the problem, so we came back up and looked some more, and then we decided to go back down and look in one room we hadn't looked in, and sure enough, there was a breaker box in there with a tripped breaker, so flipped it, reset it...
Wonder what tripped it?
Back in business. I suspect a couple of little portable...
Putting a lot of heaters on the same circuit.
Because the heater has not worked.
Yeah.
So, I talked to Mike Halpin, we're gonna create a document, list all of these breaker panels and fuse panel boxes, and then create some kind of a little map, so that we know where that, they're...
They're all...
Then it's just split all.
Some of them are still steel screw-in fuses, so...
And they work different things that don't make any sense.
Yeah, yeah, there's...
Seen a screw-in fuse since I took it off my well.
Yeah, that's where you see a lot of them on those 240 volt wells, but those older wells, of course, there's a fuse box up in the assessor's office...
Is there?
That has nothing to do with the assessor's office, it's wired to other places, so it's very bizarre, but anyway, we'll work on getting that a little more formalized. That's all I have.
And stick your finger in the fuse, well...
Tried not to.
Not a good plan.
Tried not to, yeah. Yes, sir?
Well, I, I mean, we just met yesterday, and I went to the same two meetings.
Went to everything we did.
The gentlemen did. The only, the only thing I would like to just comment on is I, I have a small concern, it's not a major concern, with the undefeated, with the Justice Center meeting, that we need to just keep in mind that we cannot play favorites, if we, we cannot go to one architect and hire him for a day.
For control.
If we choose to do that, we need to put it out for bid for everybody, transparency is utmost importance, I just want to, that was the only small concern I had, but I don't think that's really should...
I had the same one, I brought it up.
Yeah.
And I was kinda in and out, so I probably shouldn't say much, I just wondered, at face value, if we said, well, we're gonna, we're gonna hire a consultant for a day to come look at the landfill. Would we put that out for bids, or, especially if it's under the $5,000?
Here's how I would answer that. I would say to you, it's a totally different aspect, because we're getting ready to hire, hopefully, getting ready to hire, out of a bid process, an architectural firm to do an overall study and an overall process for us, and this is a part, I anticipate this to be part of that entire process, so I don't think we should segregate that. If we went to the landfill and hired an expert who comes to and says, here's what I recommend, and then we put that recommendation out for bid, I'd be fine with that, because it's not part of an overall process that we're doing right now, so I see him very differently.
It's really easy, if, if the consultant you're hiring doesn't have a company that can bid on it, what he's consulting on. In other words, if he's, if he's just a consultant that will bid, just does advice on taxes or whatever, and he wanted that, you can do that, he's not gonna come in and bid on, on doing the architectural drawings to go...
Correct, and I think the idea that we put out for bid should include that the what was suggested, a one-day consultant to us.
We did, and that's exactly right, and that should've been in there anyway, because we gotta make a decision.
Last night, I didn't see it specifically, I think maybe we oughta add it.
Well, it's, they're supposed to be recommended.
Yeah, okay, I was just concerned about that one small item, other than that, I think we're moving forward, and I'm very...
See, that's what most developments do on anything new, you, you don't know what you don't know, and so you, you put a contract out, and then you have spot checks where you're guiding it, you're making decisions with the contractor, whether, oh, I can't do that 'cause it's too expensive.
Right.
Or I can do this 'cause I wanna do it, and I'll pay for it, I'll go find the money.
Okay. Okay, anything else, sir? No? Okay. All right. Attorney items?
Well, we have one thing listed here, which has to do with your proposed ordinance, but it's also down under New Business, and that's where it should be handled, I think, as far as the reading, but I'd like to discuss a few things about it first, because right now, I had it numbered as ordinance number 19-01, and the expectation, it wouldn't be a final decision until next year. However, if it's read today, you know, if you agree on the language and wanna go forward with it, and if it is, the first reading is today, then it has to be published, which wouldn't occur until next Friday, but then you only have to wait 10 days for the final reading, so we could still do this at the end of the year, December 31 meeting, if we wanna go forward with it, so I would suggest that if you are satisfied with this and wanna pursue it, that we could change the number of the ordinance to 18-01 instead, and if you decide, or if you have questions, or if we wanna table this for a while to get more input, we can certainly do that, I just wanted to point out, we could get it done this year, if everything's acceptable.
And if we do it this year, it wouldn't be 18-01, it'd be 18-18, what was the last?
No, no, but what? Cause it's a...
Oh, this ordinance, I'm sorry.
So this is an 18-01?
And this would, it would be 18, there haven't been any other ordinances this year.
Sorry, I was confusing ordinances and...
Yeah, and ordinance is different than a resolution?
Right, yeah.
Resolutions are at 27.
Yeah.
And we're full of that.
Yeah, I, I saw it under your items and thought, well, we do it there, fine, if we do it under New Business, whatever, so...
I think I just, I don't know if Kit Shaw was planning on being here or not, I notified him that it was gonna be on, but he...
Must've stopped by, cause he dropped something off here.
Yes, yesterday.
Well, that was yesterday, can't...
Although we really can, to add it to New Business and stay within our 24-hour...
Well, it's under New Business already, ordinance for penalties for damage or defacing county property, so we've already got it down there as well, that's why I was saying, I think it'd be more appropriate for public comment at that time, and then if there is a first reading, we'd go to the second reading, then there'd be more public comment at that time, before a final decision is made.
Okay, so let's leave it, New Business, and deal with it when we get there.
Okay.
Good.
Nothing else.
Okay, administrative assistant?
I have nothing.
Public comment? Staff reports, airport. Welcome, gentlemen, 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 I don't know how that works. Gentlemen?
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
You're making a big assumption there.
Didn't have any paperwork, I don't, oh, yeah, we did, just capital improvement.
I sent you our capital improvement and bylaws.
You guys have been busy talking. By the way, while you're getting ready, Kit said the fire truck's gonna leak a little bit, is it still dripping?
A little, but not, not like it was.
Probably with soap enough, it'll probably swell up a little bit.
Yeah.
Did you get the deal cut with the air pump, the pressure tank?
No.
You guys haven't talked about sharing the cost of the compressor?
No.
Okay. Forgot to ask you earlier, we're talking...
Yeah. In, for November, we sold 332.4 gallons of fuel, and right now, we got 1,385 gallons left in the tank.
How many gallons did it have?
Pardon me?
How much is left?
They began moving dirt yesterday, they were out there till after dark, parking their equipment, I don't know what time they got done, but they were still out there after dark last, last evening.
Parking it up close, or are they looking for a plug?
No, they were just, they're parking their equipment out...
Okay.
Off the parking area.
South?
Yeah, south of the parking area.
They didn't talk to you about looking for some way to put a preheater on, an electric line or thing?
No.
Maybe they're not...
I don't know, I don't know where we'd get the electricity from.
They mentioned it to me, and I said, well, I'll talk to you if...
Yeah, they haven't talked to me about it, and I was out there.
Run a big extension cord.
Yeah, and it'd have to be a very long one. I did send you the copy of our CIP, our capital improvement program, normally what would happen is, we would come up with a capital improvement program, and then we'd send it to the commissioners for approval. This year, because of the timing, we just had a CIP update on 24th of October up in the front range, and they pushed a new version of their input form on the 24th, and then on the 5th of November, we had Armstrong and C-Dot down at the airport to discuss our CIP, and because it had to be submitted by the end of November, and we didn't have a chance to really come before the commissioners present it, so this is what's in the program, but this is still notional anyway, so I thought I'd send you a copy of it, just to let you know what's, what's going on, and then on the 10th of this...
Before we move on, I'd like to ask a question about that, if you were moving on, if not, I'll wait.
No, go ahead.
Okay. Do you have your CIP with you?
Yes.
I just wanted to, I got some place.
Yeah.
Think if I read my zeros right, at the very bottom...
Yeah.
The construction of the new runway, the projected cost is $3 billion.
Oh, jeez.
Billionaire, but we're just asking for a few bucks.
I think there's some extra zeros in there, I just wanted to bring that to your table.
I didn't even catch that.
I did, I know.
What is our share, that's what we're worried about.
Yeah, that's right.
Dude, you got crazy with the zeros.
Which is great.
I didn't actually put this...
Actually, that's like a trillion, I think, three trillion.
Yeah, probably is, and that's a great...
Million, million.
A great segue on the local match, cause I...
That's the zeros.
Is there a difference in dollars covered by the county? Well, let me rephrase that, what, what do you mean when you say local match? Is that county?
That is either, that's either county or private.
Okay.
So, well, in this case, it'd be splitting it with Hot Six.
Right.
In which case?
What they're asking for, if it's something that impacts what they wanna do, they'll split the cost with us, and so here's a match, a local match, this taxiway 3, that's the other one, right behind the thing, so they wouldn't, that would be ours.
Right.
You're talking about...
What year are you in there, Bill?
I was looking at 2023.
Okay, paved taxiway 3?
Yeah, taxiway 3's, it doesn't, they don't care about it.
So local match doesn't necessarily mean the county?
That's correct, it could be private.
Cause I added up the local match of $132,700 between 2019 and 2024, so five years, we're looking at 132,000.
Right.
When the local matches, or...
So I'll give you a good one here, 2020, you know, that's a big deal, that's an automated system that costs a lot of money, 300,000 bucks, Hot Six cares about that.
Yes.
And they, they would split that match with us, the runway lights they care about.
So, so I understand, like, for example, in 2020, the automatic weather system, the local match of 27,000...
Right.
Is something that Ops Six would be interested in?
They would, they would, you know, they'd like anything we can do to make the runway safer.
Got it.
And they want, and they're putting in an approach, so they need to know what the weather is, so they're very, I mean...
I'm just curious, when they say local match, they're interested in funding half of that local match, they're right?
Right.
Yeah.
Runway lighting, there may be another one that we would have to do that they wouldn't do, but...
Yeah.
And I understand this is your plan, I mean, obviously, it's not set in concrete.
Right, and we could slip things, I mean, if we can't afford to do it, we don't do it.
That's right.
Cause I, I noticed in 2019, it was 10,000 to be covered by the county, and from there on, it was local match, so I just noticed those two different phrases.
I, I think that was a mistake, and that local match too, and then...
I thought that was the 10,000 that was...
Oh, wait, is that the fuel?
No, that's for the slurry on the, the current taxiway, right in front of the Ops building.
That's right, that, that would be hard to get them to match.
Right.
Well, yeah, so for next year, 2019, your plan is to expand the apron?
That's correct.
And, and new taxiways, so, and the fuel tanks and the overlay.
Right. And just to let you know what has happened in the past, Caitlin ran...
That's right, I'm sorry, I misread that, you're right, that was, the local match is on the fuel system, meaning Ops Six will share it.
Right. This is what Caitlin had printed out, so you can see what's happened over the years.
Yeah, and she gave this at her last meeting down there, didn't she, when she was here?
Yeah, but all of this weren't there.
That's true.
So, I just thought I'd give you a copy of it.
Yeah, so the state and, and C-Dot's Division of Aeronautics over... however many years that is, from 2000, or from 1992...
Right.
To 2012, have kicked in 1,468,000, right?
Well, that's total.
Total, oh, yeah, their share.
That's state and local.
Yeah, yeah, this freaks me out up here, those are actually years, they have commas in them, but when I first looked at that, I thought, what that means?
Yeah, those are years.
Well, I guess they all have commas, don't they, now that I look at it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, the state... Yeah, so the state's put in over seven hundred thousand into that.
They put a lot of, a lot of money in, seven hundred and four thousand.
Yeah.
Yep, and they jumped on that AWAS because
Yes, they.
believe we're only one of two valleys left in the state.
In the state, is how they was.
Yeah. So when Wolf Springs contributed to expanding the runway. When was that? And I don't, I was always told that was a million dollars, but I don't see it in here.
Been way back when. Well, that runway was, I think before that.
I was gonna say, I think that was earlier than that.
There's one, uh, when they first came up, and that runway was another thousand feet longer when they first put it in, I think Left Witch Headed or somebody did. It was before Redmond, it was before Redmond.
So nineteen, nineteen ninety-three was runway construction.
I don't know if that was the expansion. I wasn't, I wasn't around in nineteen ninety-three.
No, I think that's when they built it.
That was when they put, made the dirt runway and then before they asphalted it. But that's when they first cut it in.
They moved it from out here east of town down there. So subsequent to that is when uh, Wolf Springs dumped the money into it, but it's just not reflected here.
And then before that, the reason they moved it out there, cause the runway did exist that I think was left with, somebody had a Learjet and they brought it in. The runway, that cut was originally longer than it is today. And then they cut the new runway on top of that and cut it down into the hole that it's in.
But anyway, like I said, this is all just notional anyway. But uh, that's why it was not brought before y'all, before we input it.
I think I've only used years the way they do it in it.
Yeah, I don't know.
What'd you say?
Okay.
And.
Those are years.
I also sent you a copy of our bylaws.
Yes, sir.
Basically, we didn't change anything in our bylaws except the name, which is now at the Airport Board.
Hey, before you do that, uh, on the last subject, we gotta, I wanted to bring this up. Uh, we do need to work on a, uh, probably a DOLA grant from an economic development point of view in order to help on some of the things that the state will not cover that we are doing. Like the uh, the state doesn't care about the, the fuel system for example. And so Hot Six is gonna buy the fuel system, but they are looking for us to help if we can find a way of, of getting an expansion grant. Uh, cause that would impact the size of the tank that we could put out there. Hot Six doesn't care if we get twelve thousand gallons, you know, they just need six for a gallon, but it really isn't. So um, so if we can get a, an economic development uh, grant of some kind. Even to defray, I don't care how big it is, that's a big, that's a big deal. And that helps us show some good faith with them that we're trying to do everything we can to help make that a partnership still. So uh, and there's time to do that now. I talked to, uh, we'll have to talk with Christie or somebody, I guess, on who handles that kinda thing from, from a, an airport slash economic point of view and see what, what we can apply for somewhere down the line. So we need to get together and push on that a little bit.
Now, the, on the tenth of December, uh, CDOT is coming down. Uh, they're renewing or they're updating their economic impact of the airport. And they sent us that thirty-some odd.
That's right, for him.
That's right. Uh, that's coming up on tenth of December from three to five.
See, that'd be a good uh, bunch of data that's needed to go forward.
Right.
So, okay.
Right.
We're, we're making, we've done a lot on our own. We've got a lot of uh, individual help by donations.
And this is.
And it's beneficial to the county because you're.
Right. So anyway, uh, that's coming up and I sent that to all the board members and copied to you also.
Well, let's get serious about it and try to get a plan ahead. We know we have to have things in by March, so let's see where we, what we can do before then. Kit, go.
Uh, that's December the tenth?
December tenth.
Yeah, what time?
Three to five.
Yeah, and I'm hosting a meeting uh, at five o'clock, so I doubt I'll be there.
What's it called? What are you gonna call?
Is that gonna be at the airport?
Yes.
So it's CDOT Aviation Group, same group?
That's right.
At ten, on the tenth?
On the tenth, at three.
Three. Okay.
Three o'clock to five o'clock. Uh, the bylaws. The, like I said, the only thing that has really changed on the bylaws is the name of the Airport Board. And we did make a provision in there to uh, if it becomes necessary or if we uh, decide to, we can separate the secretary and treasurer and have those as two different
Saw that.
Two different people because uh, the last two secretary treasurers that we had said that that job was too big for one person. And uh, so we did put a provision in there to say that it can be two people.
And or, yeah.
And it's an and/or instead of just a secretary and treasurer.
You had uh, more people wanting to be on the board too, right?
Yes, we put.
Didn't refer any to you.
Right. And Lynn and I are both a little bit concerned about uh, the board. It seems like we have a lot of people who want to be on the board, but don't wanna do anything.
Really? That's a very common.
Looks good on their resume, Custer County Board.
Yeah.
And they apply for jobs.
You can just get them to a meeting.
Yeah.
Well, I see it here that you can, if you miss two consecutive meetings at your discretion, you can remove someone.
I think you oughta unload somebody.
I think you oughta put that in effect and use it as you need be.
Yeah, and that's our intent.
Yeah, the problem will be without cause. I mean, they're gonna argue they had cause.
They had cause.
Some boards I've served on, instead of without cause, said without prior
Approval.
At least prior
Notification.
Notification to the chairman that they weren't gonna be there.
Maybe that oughta be specified a little bit.
I don't know, that's up to you guys, but I did see that without cause and that could be a very argumentative.
Well, if they had legitimate reason and we tried to coordinate with you, but we got caught in a blizzard and you guys had mercy and you can let them stay.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. The other thing I wanted to ask you about that, uh, set of bylaws in section two, number one, you make reference to uh, as part of the duties, FBO selection. Non-airport people probably don't have a clue what FBO stands for.
Yeah.
Uh, your SOP, you spelled that out as standard operating procedures.
My, my uh, my uh, proofreader brought that to my attention and I said, well, everybody knows what an FBO is, but.
I don't believe you're accurate there, sir.
Yeah, I know that.
So.
My typing skills are not what they used to be and I got a little bit lazy.
So FBO stands for?
Fixed Base Operator.
Okay, I would recommend that you put that in there in your bylaws. I mean, obviously it's a set of bylaws for the Airport Board, but there's gonna be a lot of other people look at it that's not.
Wherever you have an acronym. Spell it out first, then you can use the abbreviation from there.
Exactly.
I know.
Just put it in. Put in prints, fixed base operator.
That would be my recommendation.
My uh, editor brought that to my attention and I just got lazy.
Proper way, spell it out first, put a print, we have BO, country pay FBO on there.
Yeah, I'm assuming you sent it to us, cause you wanted us to look at it. So that's what we did, okay?
I have a couple of comments on this. All, one was, and this is just very technical, but under duties of officers, section six, which we want about Secretary of Treasurer, says all bills and vouchers are to be submitted to the Human Resource Finance Department, those are really two different things.
Yeah, Human Resources really doesn't need to be in there.
Uh, that's just, but the other thing is when we get up above to uh, your duties, the board approved a few years ago, you're, you're authorized to expend a certain amount of money for various things without having to come from prior, I don't, was it a thousand dollars or was it less than that?
It was three hundred.
Well, three hundred was what it was, I thought.
I thought you raised it.
Yeah, well, you, you raised it to, as far as I know, to whatever our budget says as long as we don't go over the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, you have the budgets you're allocated, you presented how you're gonna spend it. And then if you do it, and if you run into a jam, you're gonna have to.
Death ready.
Right.
Ready.
Well, it just was, wasn't clear to me, cause it just sounded like you were still just in a strictly advisory capacity or making recommendations, but you are authorized to do the day-to-day operations of the airport and with, you know, and make the necessary expenditure. Yeah, without coming for prior approval of every expenditure, so. I guess, I mean, if you need to spell that out or as long as that's understood as a board, you operate within your budget.
You oughta spell it out.
Yeah, it's a good point, and when you look at section two, at the second page there, the first page actually of the document of the board duties, I would guess you would need to address that there, huh? I mean, it goes beyond making recommendations, and I believe that's your point.
Yeah, that they're authorized.
Executing the budget to operate the airport.
With operating within the budget and all the regular operations of the airport.
And make some recommendations, sure, board, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, you're right, it does seem like they're, they're only capable of making recommendations here, not uh,
Operating.
Extending dollars.
And that's why we changed it from advisory board to just a strict board, so they can have some autonomy in what they do.
So the Airport Board shall, something like manage their budget?
Manage budget, yeah.
Execute and manage, operate the airport.
Execute, not a good word, something like that.
We will put something like that in there and get another. That we can do.
Okay. Yeah, everything else looked pretty decent to me.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you'll come back to us with?
Yes, yes.
Question I have, and it's procedural, on section three, number three. Um, if there is a vacancy, the board will appoint a replacement member. Should it say with approval by the B O C C, isn't that our responsibility to approve all board members, including replacements? I don't think it's important, I mean, just get the procedure down right.
What everybody else does.
No, I think you're right.
Well, it says the board, do you mean the Airport Board or the Board of County Commissioners?
I assumed they meant the Airport Board there, so.
Yes.
If we would just change that to the Board of County Commissioners, we'll appoint a replacement member from your recommendation.
Right.
Okay, well, prove it.
Approve it, yeah.
Right.
Other than that, I thought it looked great, I had no issues with it.
Yeah.
One question I did have is two-thirds majority, is that what you've always done?
Yes.
You had any problems with that? Does that eliminate things happening?
No.
They do show up, that's not in section nine. If you've done that and you're comfortable.
Well, it's two-thirds.
Of the quorum, then we have to go back and see what your quorum is.
Quorum is, two guys, you're in trouble.
Which, did you have the quorum listed in here now that I think about that? I don't think so.
That's where you're at, you got guys not coming.
You need to specify what a quorum is, and I didn't see it.
Yeah, it's uh, who's there, so you need to fix that.
I mean, there's several ways you can do a quorum, that's up to you guys, buddy.
If it's just the quorum of the actual membership, then, then that sort of gives you a hammer to enforce attendance too. I don't, however you wanna look at it again.
Some boards say the quorum is the majority of the members present at a meeting, that's pretty weak.
That's pretty weak and.
Yeah, I don't.
And that gives people, so I didn't show up, so it doesn't matter.
So two people could be construed as a quorum. I don't personally agree with that.
I don't either.
It should be half of your members, one over half of your board, or?
Two-thirds of the whole board, if that's what you really want, or make them, make them come and pay attention.
Okay, we'll get those corrections.
And then I wanted to just offer a friendly suggestion. Um, we get documents rolling through here. If they do not, I'm on the very last page, if they do not have a, a printed name line, you have no idea who's signing these documents, cause most people you cannot read their signatures. So I would encourage you to add a printed name and then a signature line right below it, or. Uh, my esteemed colleague to the right, case in point. I am, I said esteemed.
You mean, you can't read Jay's signature, is that what you said?
Um, I guess that's where I was headed.
Look, if this is the worst criticism today, I'm.
Yeah, but you're okay, you can live with that?
I can handle this.
So just some friendly suggestions there, sir. Okay, anything else?
Yes.
Okay?
Uh, the other thing is, in our bylaws, we've always had three-year appointments. And the last several years, when you make appointments at the beginning of the year, it's been for one year.
Oh.
So we were wondering if it would be possible for you to appoint members to the board for three years instead of just one.
That's what's in your bylaws, which it is here, right?
Do that, and you're trying to stagger them?
Yeah, staggered three-year terms.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, if you bring somebody as a new member, we do it on every other board we have.
I, I agree, but we ratify each board every year, so.
Yeah, we can fire somebody if they're not doing their job.
No, I don't think we do.
What we do, that's why you.
Only new members. We only look at new or replaced members. Okay. Because on tourism board, there's a twenty-twenty on there, we don't even consider that. Same with fair board, any of those boards.
But when they bring the entire slate to us, we.
I don't think they do, do they? I mean, they submit them to Brenda, but I think it's only the new things, just the new people.
That's right, but we, but we can, if we wanted to, if there was some reason, you can always review a board.
Well, we've done that.
Yeah, we've done that, right, so.
That's not a problem.
That's not an automatic thing, but the automatic one is we, we always check the new members.
You've been asking us to submit
Right.
letters of interest every year.
Yep.
And what we're saying is, we would like to, starting in twenty nineteen.
You're right, we're talking kinda. Really, I'm coming from. You articulated where my thought train wasn't, but you're right.
Yeah.
Cause we make, we ask each person who wants to remain on a board to continue to, and if they don't, then what happens if we've approved you for three years, but you failed to send in a letter stating you wanna stay on? We have a, we have an issue.
Can I defer to Ms. Brenda for some input here? Uh, as we just did, sent out a notice to people to submit their intent to serve on a board. Well, that's not really accurate if they're on like a three-year term and their term's not up, would you agree?
They don't have to submit until their term.
It's only new or replacement members.
That's right.
And we probably didn't make that very clear, but you're.
I've been off the, I've been off the beaten path here then. I've always thought each person who wants to remain on a board, even if you're with a new term. Yes, sends a letter saying I'd like to stay. If that's the case, I stand corrected and I'm fine.
Yeah, and actually, I was with you in that mindset, I just never sorted those two things out on this slate.
Yeah, I had to clarify and it's.
But the notice we sent out was only for new or replace, replacement members.
Okay.
So you're, you're good. If you got three-year terms, we don't need to hear anything about them until their term expires.
Or they wanna resign.
Well, you want them.
Does that make sense?
Or you want them off.
That makes sense to me, except every year when we've got our letter of appointment, it says it's a one-year appointment.
Okay, well, let's look at that.
Well, what I can do is if you wanna change that to a three-year, I'll just change it to a three-year and.
Yeah, if they're three years, that's fine.
But anyway, what we're suggesting is for twenty nineteen, everybody that wants to be on the board will submit a letter of interest to the county commissioners and we've got one in already for Trey, and I don't know how to pronounce Trey's last name, do you?
Costco.
Costco. So the rest of the board will submit a letter of interest to be on the board for twenty nineteen. So the rest of the board will submit a letter of interest to be on the board for twenty nineteen. And if you would, make those three-year appointments, instead of, the letter that I got last year was for a one-year appointment.
You want everybody to be a new three-year, or everybody's gonna be due in three years, and you didn't want, you don't want to stagger those guys?
No, let's just go ahead and do it for three-year.
Okay.
And what we're gonna do internally, we're going to stagger the officers on the board. So, like, the the chairman will be.
Serve a year or whatever.
Three years, and vice chair, two years, and so on and so forth. But let's start with a clean slate in twenty nineteen. So everybody that wants to be on the board will submit a a letter of interest. And you guys were asking that y'all appoint us for three years instead of the one.
Okay, well, we've got a problem with that, technically, because your bylaws say they're gonna be staggered terms, what you're proposing is not a staggered term.
That, Bob, don't make it harder than it is, because you guys want to serve for three years, that's fine, get somebody to volunteer to be up in a year. And if he wants to rejoin, that would be the guy for the next appointment for three years.
Okay.
Could draw those names out of a hat.
You can do that, it doesn't matter, because they're not gonna, they're not gonna quit, just get them staggered now, so that we don't have to, otherwise you're gonna have the same thing in three years.
A couple of one-years.
Right, a couple of one-years, and then when they come up, you just appoint them for three years, and they want to get that new term for three years, that's fine.
See, because if we do want your proposal, we'll be doing exactly what is opposite in your bylaws, so what's the point of having bylaws, we're not gonna deal with those.
Right.
Because they say staggered terms, so you need to present us a membership list that has staggered terms on them already.
Yeah, we're, and. Okay, why don't we list, send you one list.
One list with the staggered bunch of guys.
With everybody that wants to be on the board.
Yep.
And we'll stagger them.
Say, all right, Bob's gonna be up next year, you'll you'll come do, and we'll point you for three more years.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Bob.
Yeah, they need to be staggered when they come to us.
Yeah, okay, right.
And we'll submit one list.
Right.
Right.
Perfect.
So we're basically starting over with.
Right, but we're recertified, okay, this guy's a year, this guy's two, this guy's three.
And then from then on, only people whose term expired would need to submit a letter of interest.
Right, that works, okay.
Okay.
I had a question, I thought Brian Anderson was one of, didn't he ever get a hold of you?
Ye- yes, he did.
And he doesn't want to join?
Yes, he does, but as far as I know, we haven't got a letter of interest from him yet.
Bugging, because he he won't, he doesn't, he thinks he did that already, by talking to him, probably.
Okay, we will put his name on our list that we send you for twenty nineteen.
Okay, cool.
We'll put him in there for however many years.
For a year.
Yeah, the notice.
Or whatever you decide.
That Brenda sent out was that the B O C C at their January meeting will be making appointments to various county boards. The boards, the B O C C will be accepting the letters of interest from the following groups, so.
Just give us the name.
Probably should have said new members.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, good.
But anyway, we're gonna start over again in twenty nineteen, we'll submit a, one list of these guys.
And their terms.
Or women, and for their terms.
Okay, and a maximum of seven, correct?
That's correct.
You think you can get them all to sign off on that individually?
I doubt it, because we, we're right now having a hard time getting every board member to come to every meeting.
Then I would draw their names out of a hat and assign it to them.
Just assign them, you're on a one-year term.
One year or two year or whatever, again.
That's what we're gonna do.
It's, if they want, and you want them on there, it's a moot point, because you can reappoint them when that term expires, as Commissioner Candor was saying, so. Okay, good, very good, what else, sir?
Next time, bring the donuts.
Yeah, you bring the donuts, we're easier to get along with.
Where's the, where's the apple?
We're near as critical of bylaws that we have donuts to eat.
Oh, the other thing that we wanted to know was about, at the end of this year, money that is not spent, what happens to that money? Because it was unclear to some of the board members of exactly what happens to the money if we have money left in our budget.
Goes back in the general fund.
Rolls into the general fund, and you're only feeling what your budget was.
Right, is that including or excluding fuel?
In what way?
What we have left in our fuel budget, does that stay in our budget?
Carryover, I don't think so, no.
Because the the concern we have is, if we gotta buy fuel in February, and we don't have any money to go buy fuel in February.
Why wouldn't you, you have a new budget?
That's what I'm wondering is.
No, your new budget should cover that.
Our new budget is.
Sure, you've you've projected it out.
Right.
That's why it's important to come each month, understanding where you stand and how much money you're you're able to buy fuel with into the end.
Okay, so if it's, if we got twenty thousand budgeted for twenty nineteen, and we need to buy fuel January second.
Should be good to go.
Sure, we're good to go, okay.
Yeah.
Now, there's one thing that I just thought of, and it's a good point, remember, it's it's a fuel pays for itself now, right, so you know, that money isn't county money that we put into the fund, it's money that you've earned, so that it truly is your money. It's still budgeted, though, that's why, I mean, it rolls into it next year, into that line, it should it should still be there.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
Yeah, it may be a Donald question, I didn't think it rolled over, but.
I mean, your budget is your budget, it starts over and on.
That's right, your budget is your budget, we know the fuel is self-sustaining, you know, it's buying itself.
We've got money in there.
That you earned.
That has been paid.
That's right, sorry.
So, is that there, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It it's not in addition to whatever you budgeted for twenty nineteen.
Let's say you had twenty thousand dollars left at the end of this year that you had not spent on fuel.
Right.
Again, this is probably a Donald thing, my understanding is that would not carry an add on top of your twenty nineteen fuel budget. So, and here's the problem, so people knowing that say, well, by God, it doesn't take a rocket science, I'm gonna go spend that four thousand dollars on fuel. Okay, because I'm afraid I won't get what I wanted in the next year. This administration feels like, if you are managing your money and you have money left over, that goes back into general fund, that is for the health of this county. We're not gonna punish you by saying, well, you didn't spend all your money last year, so you're not getting that much money this year.
And that's what the military used to do to us.
All the time, you spent, use it or lose it.
That's right.
And if you didn't spend it all, it means you got less next year, because you can only spend that much.
But I I think we're safe in saying today, that's not our position.
Especially when this is a profit organization, you you guys are making money to do it.
But January first, the money that's budgeted for fuel can be used for fuel, regardless of what's there last year.
We're we're good with that.
So you gotta keep track of your profit, because you could take that out and go rent a car, or whatever, if it's in addition to what you thought you had budget, see what I'm saying?
Yeah. I think we're we're in good shape. So, that, we're just wanting to make sure what all those things meant.
As I understand it, if you don't expend it, it goes back into general fund, that was your original question.
Right.
Now, there's a lot of other things to wrap around that.
But your new budget immediately starts, you can buy your fuel.
Cool.
Good.
We're good.
All right, anything else, sir?
No, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
That was longer than I thought it was gonna be.
Yeah, it's all right.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Mark down the apple fritters at the bottom of it.
I'll have to remember that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hey Lynn, nice, nice suspenders and cuffs.
I I thought so, too.
How are you? How are you?
I'm good.
Good. So, let's see, did we get? The end report.
We'll talk some more about that.
Well.
You're just walking out confused, you can tell by one cuff's older than the other.
So, we got the reimbursement for the spring fire, that got deposited, Meredith also got reimbursed, because she didn't go through payroll. Spent down some of the homeland security money, spent all of the cert money, but thirty cents, so we can close out that twenty sixteen grant. I've gotta get VIPS and M R C to spend a little bit of, more of theirs, but at least that's some of that on this year's budget. Because we didn't really budget anything for it next year, but it's, it doesn't get reimbursed, but doesn't get expended, so.
VIPS stands for?
Volunteers in Police Services, so that's our posse. I think what we're gonna do on that one is do a grant change towards the radio project. The coroner got three thousand dollars on a mini grant for radio for nineteen, and so Shannon's sort of working on quotes and trying to get everybody on board to a single radio purchase, so.
So Sorda, is he doing it?
He work, he's working with Walt, Walt gave him some pricing based on volume, I I believe he's still on it.
He thinks he's gonna go do that with it.
He left for, he got a vacation at Thanksgiving, so we haven't caught up since then. But when, before Thanksgiving, he was working with Walt at Digicom and had the best pricing.
That's what I thought.
And, yeah, and I know he's going after that, what's that, a JAG grant? The Judicial Assistance Grant, and I think that's February, so I think he's hoping to score some money for for law enforcement radios with that grant, but the last I heard, we were looking at, I think we had to have at least sixteen radios on the purchase order to get some decent pricing, and then
Yeah, that was what it was.
The end that I'm working on is trying to get Barry Mitchell to bring the trailer back up and do reprogramming onsite for like, three, four days, whatever it takes, where we would bring in all the vehicles and all the handbells, but that way we can use the SAR building and be pulling in cruisers and bringing over fire trucks, and we need to do the tuning and reprogramming part, and the tuning's been since June of twenty fifteen, and they really should be tuned every couple of years, so they'll start drifting. So we're trying to coordinate all that for spring of nineteen. But yeah, so that posse money, I think that's where that'll go, and maybe some of the rest of the M R C money. And then I went to the retech meeting, and Tom had signed a couple of grant applications, so EMS got some more of that, there was fifteen thousand dollars. But EMS got a little bit towards their medical director, SAR got a little bit towards their medical director, and then Dispatch got some of that money towards their E M D program. So, for the Dispatch, so that fifteen is all spent, and I may re- reach out to Chuck to just get a little bit more history on how that retech funding goes, since it's, you know, essentially counting funding, it's not necessarily all to EMS.
I've got a question, it's probably an ignorant question. My mind has wondered some since we took action this summer about the spring fire. You got paid from the county for that, this money went back into general fund, this spring fire reimbursement.
That reimbursed every.
And that was three thousand two hundred bucks.
Yeah, so that was, you know, it reimbursed the the burdened rate, so for the benefits and everything, yeah. So, the county got reimbursed, you know, like, for the straight hours, too, so.
Yeah, there was a little bit of concern.
Yeah.
Why we were paying overtime, and we said, we're gonna get reimbursed for that, that is that reimbursement.
That's that reimbursement, and then Meredith, her hours since she was part-time, didn't bill to the county at all. So her reimbursement went directly to her.
To her.
Yeah, so that was good to see it in this calendar year, there won't have to be any adjustments. And then I'm, one of my grant deliverables is a finance plan, and so I'm gonna give that off to Meredith this week, I've been working on it, and then she's gonna take a stab at proofing it and cleaning it up, and then that transition policy draft, which, you know, I don't know if that's ever anything that you would do or not, but they kind of tie hand in hand, because you have to understand the finance piece, which is, I've spent three years learning, and probably still only know a little bit. But that's, you know, it's the do's and don'ts of why we need to consider those things for reimbursements, if it's, especially if it's our emergency, how we're gonna do that, so. So, yeah, trying to finish those up for the year. I've got the 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 two things I had told Brenda in my email, I wanted to tell you about, were the the E M P G grant for, it's the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Working on that draft for twenty nineteen, it's, has to be signed by the end of January, and the chairman of the board will sign that plan. So I did two different finance staffing patterns, one with Meredith in there for a portion, and then one without her, just to see if I thought we were gonna be okay either way, because as we cut the budget, the state could cut back on us, too, and so my concern is that we don't lose anything. They're telling us to plan on keeping the same we got, which was the thirty-six thousand dollars grant funding. So, I just want to make sure we don't cut ourselves too short, I think we're good either way. I'll probably put her in the staffing pattern, and then expect that to phase down the next year. And then the other part that I have not drafted yet, that Meredith and I have discussed what we're gonna work on, is the the performance part of the work plan. And that hasn't changed, it's seventy-five percent, is still basically resource mobilization, web E O C, the stakeholder meetings, the train, training and exercise. So, and, you know, we're still working on what we're gonna do there, and then our training and exercise plan, we we have to participate in three exercises, so we're planning a wildfire evacuation exercise. And we're planning it for the fall, because we know it's unrealistic to have it done. If we have an actual event, then that can count as our exercise, but I think we're gonna, we're talking about reaching out to Corinverde, and they've had an exercise before, but because they're actively involved in developing a C W P P and evacuation routes, we're thinking they may still be a good one to go back and and do that area. But we could certainly look at somewhere else, the other thought would be, maybe do something more up at the hillside area, because then we could involve the new Fremont County Emergency Manager, and it would count for both programs to kind of do something together, so. I'll talk to Kit and the fire department and see if they have any input there. But our our exercise, we have to exercise like alert notifications, one part that we want to do, because we brought in the I-Paws, and we need to develop those standard operating agreements there. But, so just the whole reverse notification and I-Paws and social media, and then activating the E O C, so.
Did you ever work with Ry and San Isabel?
Beulah fires, good one to work with, Brian and Ry, Steve Bennett, I haven't done a lot with them, but that's another great area.
Not had a, well, we had almost a fire, but we didn't.
And that's one of the biggest areas of concern, is down there, because, you know, our big bad fires. Our big bad fire's gonna, you know, end up back in Pueblo County again, and, yeah, so that's a good note. I think Brian Ware, Chief Ware is coming to the mop meeting tomorrow, and there's some talk about developing wildfire protection plans down there, I know one of the, one of the communities in Custer County wants a plan, and we're trying to figure out how to collaborate on some of that.
If I were those guys, I'd be worrying a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, I think Ry, Beulah, and Lake San Isabel are, out of the Ceman study, those were the three biggest concerns, and then, you know, and from the group, the regional group, and then I add on Corinverde and and Adobe, and
Sure.
Some of those is is my concerns, but yeah, that's that's a good idea, we could potentially do one down there, I know we did one in in Beulah five years ago or so, Christie Coleman worked on that. But yeah, that might be a good place to do, figure out something. So anyway, I'll finish that up, and then the elective options on that, and the only other thing that I had to ask you about, so that, I'll need to sign that in January. I'll have it drafted into you, so we'll get that done. And then, the, I think maybe Teresa Springer gave you a call, Tom?
She did.
Okay, so, that post-fire grant is still out there with FEMA, they're extending the deadline, they, the state of Colorado reached out to FEMA, the letter was supposed to go out yesterday, we think the deadline's gonna be extended into March or April. It's post-fire, so you can do some green mitigation, but it doesn't. Um, it's post-fire, so you can do some green mitigation, but it doesn't, there's not as much money and so Teresa Springer with Coco. Their group, um, has a private entity. A, a foundation who wants to try to do a demonstration project on reforestation. And so it would probably be down at Billington Ranch or maybe Bonhams, um, and I'm trying to think of Cross Creek Ranch. Um, it'd be in those, it, it would, so it wouldn't involve a lot of small property owners, it'd be maybe two or three really small property owners. Um, and if this foundation made the twenty-five percent match, Coco is asking if. The commissioners in the county would sponsor the grant, be the fiscal agent, because. The only eligible entities in Custer County on the hazard mitigation plan that could sponsor would be Custer County Silver Cliff or West Cliff. So they want to know, um, if that's something that you would support doing, if it didn't cost the county any money more than. There's still gonna be some time involved on doing EM grants and, and managing it and, uh. She's saying, and I've gotta reach out to Steve Boand, but that the, the deadline would be extended, the state would help write the grant. There'd be no county funds involved and they wanna help us learn how to do an A-plus grant, potentially. Um, without Coco being the one to kind of wanna facilitate it and do it, it would be more than I could. She won't, I'll, I've learned that, so I don't wanna overcommit.
She did call me, we had a relatively extended conversation, I happened to be traveling at the time, so I didn't have a hundred percent of my attention there, but. Uh, part of her conversation was that she had this five hundred thousand dollar grant opportunity and it was gonna be a hundred thousand through the county to match that. And I said, look, I didn't say it specifically to her, but I said, well, that's gonna be an issue, cause we don't have a hundred thousand.
Right.
And then I got to thinking after that conversation was, um. If people make their living writing and administering grants. And expect other people to match those grants, to keep them employed, I struggle with that a little bit. Now, if they're needed, I don't have a problem with that, but just to go out and write grants, cause that's what I do to make a living. Oh, and by the way, you're gonna have to cough up thirty thousand for this to happen, but it's such a great grant, it's gonna do your county. I start filtering that a little, now maybe that's cynicism on my part, but. Uh, it'd be great for everybody to run around, dream up these projects, but that doesn't mean that, I don't think morally. We are obligated to try to match all these grants, cause we don't have the money. And I kind of told her, I didn't get into the whole making your living doing grants thing, but.
Right, and, and that came up as an issue before, um, with Coco, yeah.
And one of the commissioners despised Coco for that particular reason.
Right.
They felt they were doing this just for the.
Just to make money, sure, which I don't think she makes money any other way, right? I'm not picking on her, using her as an example.
Yeah, uh.
That's what she does for a living.
Yeah, the, the Coco organization does the watershed protection, they're mostly on the black side after the fire and then. Some of the, um, other, um, child organizations like CUSP are doing the green mitigation. Pre-fire, um, you know, Chaffey County just passed a sales tax to, to do the same thing, but yeah, it's, it's a fine line of do, you know. Do we really need this now, with the Billington Ranch, I know you guys have spent some time down there, trying to reinforce that would stabilize the slopes and potentially. Protect the watershed, but, but at some point, you know, the ranch owners there need to come forward and say, you know, I really want you to support this too.
I'm on board with Tom, um, in terms of, we need to look at each opportunity and say, what is the benefit? As opposed to. Should take money, cause it's there. Last commissioner who was, if Coco's involved on voting, no, that was his attitude.
Yeah.
Wow.
And that was just irresponsible in my opinion.
Yeah.
But we do need to look at each one and say, if we're gonna commit any county resources, even if it's just, even if it's just administration of the grant. We need to look at, say, well, who is going to do that, don't we stick to, we'll work on Donna, how much work?
Yeah.
I mean, we need to, we need to look at these carefully and determine what's the benefit.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would hope that we could look to you on these situations and you say, hey, we're probably talking twenty-five, thirty hours this year. Or three hundred hours or whatever, cause I don't know what it's gonna take to administer this reforestation grant, wouldn't that be?
I agree completely.
And it's all, you know, it's all online, um, that's where I kind of brought up at the staff meeting, um, I don't know much about two CFR two hundred and. You know, if we start getting into this, we have to be compliant and I'm not saying.
We ask for, uh, you ought to have a plan against how to spend it and why you want it, right? So, on how to, how to go forward, that's sort of tagging on what, what Jay and Tom just said. Right, I mean, that's how you would do it, you're not just going out looking and, well, then here's some money available, I'll go figure out how I'm gonna go spend it.
Sometimes that's not.
Right.
In our best interest, especially when it comes to deliverables and, and administration.
Well, and, and, you know, getting back to the Ready Set Go grants and some of those other ones, um, you know, I, I kind of wanna tighten up and. Not make that part of, you know, I wanna make my, my focus a little smaller. Go ahead. No, there, you're all right.
I look to you, you're our expert, you need to say, this one is something we really need to pursue. And this is one that I just don't really see the utility in us doing, so, I mean.
Okay.
Well, and she has done that even this fall.
I know you have.
Yeah.
I'm reiterating that, just because Coco, and I'm not picking on Coco, any organization says, I want X, Y and Z.
Right.
I, I look to you to say, we really need to do this because it's this and this, or I don't see the utility in it or something like that.
Yeah, and, and this one, I, sort of falls that, you know, we're not trying to protect or rebuild a, you know, water. Treatment facility or, or some critical infrastructure, so this is really, um, more of a, uh. Showcase reforestation project that would benefit, you know, one or two property owners down there, um. You know, it, it also, it gets our foot in the door to learn the process and to show the state we could do something if we have a. Future aspiration to do that, uh, but without a partner like Coco CUSP, we'll never build that capability, so it's, it's sort of hard for me. I mean, I'm, the easy answer for me is to say, yeah, let's not do it, I don't wanna have any more workload, um, but then, you know, the, the flip side is.
If we ever. You're not gonna, workload is not gonna make your decisions, I know that.
And, and if we ever wanna get our foot in the door, this could be an incredible learning opportunity, if those things happened, if. It's, you know, awarded to, um, uh, you know, like Coco, another vendor, if they've got this foundation, which I sat on. The conference call, I know it's a reputable foundation, if they're really putting up twenty-five percent and cash and, and there's no cash outlay. Then do we wanna turn that down?
And that's when we would ask you, what do you think, and I said, yeah, I think the administration is minimal or reasonable, let's do it. I think we'd be on board, I would go to that.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, if, if I talk to Steve Boand and they're saying they're gonna write the grant, they're gonna walk us through this, then I think it would be. A reasonable expectation to try to go for the money and see, um, and then, you know, if none of the, if those things aren't met, then say pass. And, you know, you as commissioners don't have to make that final decision now, you'd have to sign a grant application in March or April. But the award wouldn't be until twenty twenty and you'd still be able to say, you know, this isn't what we talked about, we, this got a little more complicated, so. So I will let them know, I'll let them know that we'll, uh, look at the potential with no commitment.
Quick, you called me a podcast, now RSG grant, what is?
The Ready Set Go.
Oh, Ready Set Go.
The, yeah.
With an exclamation.
And along that same.
Looking at RSGL.
Yeah.
Uh, explanation.
And say, along that same line, PSAP.
That took me a while.
PSAP is the Public Service Answering Point, the, that's dispatch.
Got it. You are.
See, I have a quarter, you're just gonna have to bring the, uh, the jar.
No, you're fine, I mean, you'd be crazy to write all that stuff out.
Oh, I know.
Uh, I just.
Fine, I just didn't.
We talked about PSAPs last night and I was struggling with that, I just could not get a grip on that.
Public Service Answering Point.
Yeah.
Hey, public work.
All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Break?
Yep.
Yeah, uh, we're going to recess for about three minutes. Meeting will come back to order, we will reconvene, next on our agenda is a report from the treasurer's office. See, I said that.
Ah, you're the treasurer today.
Just today. We had Sicky stay home.
Uh-oh.
We don't like Sicky around here, do we?
Get a copy of this, cause I didn't know.
Uh, let me look real quick, but I don't think so.
I was told you did.
Uh, yeah, yes, uh, you want the date on it?
It's here.
Let me back it up.
This look familiar?
Uh, twelve fourth, twenty eighteen.
Yep.
I pulled it off an email, so twelve fourth.
Any balance?
Oh, we got any money?
No.
Few bucks.
So, I don't know, have you guys ever been given like a layman's tutorial of how to read this, do you understand? Or what each of the columns mean?
Sometimes we ask, there was a couple in here we didn't know, um.
So, for example, you got your beginning balance, that would have been your October ending balance for each of the funds, okay? So as a prime example, um, anybody that had tax collection that we collect, um, on mills. Their ending balance, um, say for example, um, Fire District, okay, so their beginning balance for the new month. Was ten thousand oh thirty-two sixty-seven, because that's what we would have finished their balance off in October. But if you follow that line clear over to the transfers next to last column, that same amount was paid out to them. That was their tax collection that we give them, from the end of October, we pay out in November. So, the first column is just taxes, that's what we're collecting on mill levy.
Okay.
That is significant higher than last month because we had our tax lien sale in November. So we collected pretty much the remainder of all the taxes, with the exception of a few mobile homes that we have not collected on. Um, but that balanced out all the rest of the mills, all the money that we have coming in for taxes for the remainder of the year. Um, second, or be the third column, the delinquent tax, that's basically all the interest based on the current tax column. Um, specific ownership tax is predominantly Kelly's, um, monies and it is classes B, C, D and F. Which is directly, um, established from her reports from the prior month, so when she balances out her October business. Um, we then distribute that to anybody that gets mills, um, they're, they're distributed a piece of the pie of Kelly's money. Portions of Kelly's money then goes to the state, the state then reimburses us class A and F. Which also gets distributed to anybody that has mills, so that's that specific ownership tax column. Um, receipts and miscellaneous, this is actually the monies that we brought in for the month, people that brought in a grant, a check. Paid their bill, whatever is your receipt miscellaneous, then you start your distribution or dispersment's money. Um, the warrants paid is all of the approved checks that you approved of Donna's stuff the prior month. So, this is the money that cleared the bank, warrants paid, stuff that you probably approved at your October.
Right.
Last day of the month, that's cleared the bank, treasurer's fees, we get a fee associated with tax collection. So each of the entities that have a mills, we, we take a little piece of the pie and that gets transferred back into county general. And then transfer miscellaneous, um, you can see the approval for like the hundred and twenty-five thousand, then we transferred out of Lua Tax to pay the bills. That's in that column, it also has any of the warrants that we pay directly, it doesn't go on a warrant through Donna. It's paid out of our office to pay the entities that get their tax revenue.
Now, these treasurer's fees are their dispersments or their receipts?
No, they're dispersments, that actually gets taken out, so as an example, um, C-one School District General Fund. We collected in taxes, uh, twenty-three thousand six forty sixteen, they pay us. I think theirs is a quarter of a percent, um, treasurer's fee for collecting their money for them.
Okay.
Um, a lot of the other entities, um, Fire District, um, Upper Arkansas, they pay us one percent.
So, so minus fifty-nine-ten?
Fifty-nine-ten is what the school, we took out of their.
For administering. That's right.
Right, for collecting their money and it goes into county.
Positive money, that's real money that goes back into the art.
Goes into the county general fund.
So that's a disbursement out of their line item.
So the four, four thousand bucks is, was added to the general fund.
Correct, correct.
Same with transfers.
Transfers is the checks that we pay out to the entities for their tax collection, um, transfer of the money from one fund to another. Like the hundred and twenty-five thousand from Lua Tax, um, Kelly's checks, all of Kelly's dispersments, the two sixty-four toward the bottom. Um, that is her paying the state of Colorado for all of her registrations, the sales tax, um, things of that nature.
Who does the state send the tourism money to, you?
To us.
To you guys.
That would be, so they got this month.
Lodging tourism, sixty-five. Sixty-five, that was the beginning.
Right, so they actually received it, yeah, nineteen-four, forty-three, thirty-eight and we, they actually pay us, uh, five percent. Um, for doing their books, cause it's not tax collection, they're not mill levy, it's taxes that, um, are paid through the hotel. Industry or whatever, so they are at a little higher rate because it's not actual mills, so they pay us five percent. So that's what their nine seventy-two is, and they had one check that cleared for the month in the amount of eight hundred bucks, yeah.
Is that a legislative percentage you get?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that eight hundred was for Vista Works.
That's the one check that cleared their account in that month's time.
God knows how many more are not gonna clear it, but hey, no deal, so, uh, the county general received nine seventy-two out of that. Nineteen-four, forty-three for tourism.
Right, yeah, it's part of the four thousand that got.
Right, okay.
That was our tax, do their work, we keep the money.
Collects that tax at the state level, who does that money go to?
For tourism, it, they pay it through their, their licensing.
Right, but it goes to what department at the state, Revenue?
Department of Revenue and then it gets sent back to us, yeah, our portion, I'm sure they take a cut, but.
Right.
Kelly gets all those reports, she gets the reports because it is confidential, um, but we get the money, you know, just a flat fee.
And my reports actually show the full amount, they don't minus out the amount that counts, they're, yeah, the administrative.
Right.
Amounts.
Are, are you, I know we're kind of going probably on a little rabbit trail here, but this is something I wanted to talk about at some point, are, are you. Allowed to share names and not money? You can't even share the names either, we talked about this at CCI last week.
For what, Tom?
For entities that are collecting and remitting pil- uh, lodging tax. I'm trying not to call it pilotax, cause that irritates me.
How, how we earned it, where up here in this county?
That's your deal, so, yeah, so.
If I have all the names on a list.
Right.
And then I just look at that list every month and just. It's kind of a, I don't wanna say guessing game, but I, over the years, you just gotta familiarize yourself, you know. Um, I'll use, uh, Antler Liquor as an example, cause they're pretty steady about what they. Um, and this is sales tax, but lodging tax would work the same way, they're pretty steady about what they bring in and you know, in the summer, they're gonna be up here. And in the winter, they're gonna be down here and so I just sort of watch those things and then Jackie, I don't know where she went, uh. Like on the lodging tax, if Jackie is out and about and notices somebody's running a.
Bed and breakfast.
Bed and breakfast out of their house and she doesn't think that they're paying their, then she'll ask me. I'll go on and look at the list and I'll think, I'll say, uh, I'll see that they are on there and that that's good and I'll. Or they're not on there and then I notify Department of Revenue and they are actually the ones that contact them and say, hey.
It's up to us to monitor, it's up to them to contact.
To contact.
Yeah, cause they have no clue with them.
Week, week. Weak, weak county system, I'm telling you.
Yeah, and it's hard. The, when I first started doing it, I asked them, how in the heck am I supposed to know?
Right.
What, and she said, it's pretty much, you just gotta, and it's good to be in a small town.
Right.
Because you know, you know how the trends are and you know the businesses and
There's gotta be a lot of people in these big counties that.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I would imagine.
And it's not right in these small commu- counties either. Really, it's just a sorry.
People out there that don't.
Boy, they'd have to have a whole, uh, enforcement department in the state to go running around. I don't know how you do it.
You would. I don't know how you.
Well, it's on the honor system right now.
I know, I know it is, but.
And the lodging tax, I think, is really hard because everybody's got a room in their house that they wanna rent out.
Rent out.
Or have a summer home that they wanna rent out. And some people know they should be paying it and they don't. Some people don't have a clue they should be paying it.
And some know and don't. That's the one that worries.
Yeah.
Well, you know, and it's not hard. I mean, they're not paying it. They're, the customer is.
The customer.
You know, it's, it's just a hassle to go figure it out and get, get the paperwork to do it. It's like, uh, social security, uh, tax and, uh, when you have a business, it's a hassle filling all that.
All that out, yeah.
Well, I wonder if it would be reasonable to ask tourism to take that on? Say, hey, it's your money. You oughta be helping us watchdog this.
Please sit somehow.
I think you've tried, haven't you?
I already have answers.
Well, then we'll wait till you're up.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, let's finish her up.
But I ran the trail.
Partial answers.
I, uh, I moved that we accept the treasure.
Wait a minute before you do that.
For the month of November two thousand.
I'll second.
Moving seconded to accept the monthly report for November from the treasurer's discussion?
Yeah, I wanted just to ask a question. This is a general, I like, appreciate that, that, that's a good, good help. Thanks for doing that. Uh, so if you look at the beginning balance and the ending balance, it's about two hundred grand we spent out of here to do business. To me, that's not a bad thing. Is that normal? Is that a normal cash flow, looks to me?
There's no way of knowing normal because we're just, we're just.
Last, uh, November.
I would have to go look at it, but, um, you, you just have to realize, yeah, we're not making the money coming in because we're at the end of the collection of our taxes.
But you're in that same month each year, but, and all I'm asking is.
Right, so that's why we had to transfer the money. Because we didn't have enough money within County General to cover all the expenses that you guys approved to pay out. That's not un-normal.
Been the case too.
It, it probably, it would have been the case.
In the year before maybe.
Yeah. Little sooner, um, is what happens sometimes when, um, we get a lot of our collection earlier in the year. So we have less and less that comes in, um, say after our last deadline collection, um, June and July. So August, September, um, typically if it's a not a year that we're spending a lot of money within that timeline, we may not ask you to do a transfer at that point because we're sustaining okay in the budget or within our funds. Um, but if that happens to be a timeframe when somebody's wanting new vehicles or a pa- a payment is due on a lease, then we may even have to have that transfer of funds even a little earlier.
So, so.
It's not uncommon.
Why I'm asking the question. You know, e- and even in my home, when I'm watching, I get an electric bill and says, last year this time you paid up here, this year you're here. I say, well, good. My new insulation paid off this year. You know, or it's up higher. I say, jeez, I need to go fix the window. Uh, so from a commissioner point of view, you guys are smart. I, I understand you, you're, you work it every day and you see the trends and you've got it in your mind. But, uh, but to come in and ask us to transfer, we're gonna transfer six hundred thousand bucks, we go, whoa, why? Uh, if we know that it could present at the same time, here's a trend line throughout the year. I mean, you could, you could map a trend line for us uh, for the whole year. It goes up and down because you get it revenue in, get revenue out. We could look at the revenues coming in in August and say, normally we would, we would, should see a bunch because the rodeo's on, the tourists are up here. But this time it didn't do that this year. And so we can say, well, maybe it's because we had the, there's logical reasons. The forest fire step kept people coming out, uh, whatever. So it helps us understand whether we oughta be calling the sky is falling because we don't have enough money. And we gotta get the tourism board busier to get people up here to move in, or we've gotta go, uh, tighten our belt and start moving and saying, we're not gonna spend the money we thought we were gonna spend. It's just a way of helping us monitor it a little bit rather than if you come in and it, and when you see the numbers black and white, it's, this is good. But help us understand maybe where it is in context.
Well, and that's, you're kind of comparing apples and oranges because you're talking budget. You're talking, typically.
Spend it. I'm talking, show me.
And we have to.
Difference was last year for the month of November.
We have to transfer the money based on what you guys spent in the month before. And we, we calculate or know what the ending balance for a particular month is. And then Donna, from budget and, and her warrants, what you guys are spending for that next month. By the end of that given month, we have to transfer money because she had already wrote the checks.
Understand.
So we have no way of knowing that because that's between you and budget. That's how you spent the money.
I understand what you're saying.
I, I don't care.
Because it should, it sounds logical, and I don't know if it should, but it sounds logical that in any given month, we could track the income and outflow based upon what the previous year did. So we could compare, is this typical or is it atypical this particular payment cycle?
Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. I don't care.
Yeah, I think we probably only have it, um, without going into a lot of, um, digging. Um, we would have points of when we've asked for transfers. You know, if it was in August because that was a big month, a particular year. Um, typically this time of the year is when we do the transfers and, um, to cover the checks that we don't have the money to cover.
Be graded. I don't care when you start doing it, but right now I see two hundred thousand dollars we spent.
And how does that compare to this?
How's that compare to this timeline?
Well, technically, technically, if you look at your warrant list, your dispersments warrants paid, you spent paid in November, six hundred and sixty-eight thousand.
But the difference in what we took in and what we paid is two hundred thousand dollars more. That's all you, you, we, you see, we took in less revenue this month, and then we spent and we got a difference of two hundred K. I understand that. And so all I'm saying, you do that every month. There's an income and there's an outgo. And so, uh, you know, it would be helpful is all I'm suggesting.
Right.
Understand the trend even from the previous month. You know, over the, maybe we get a trend of the last three months and then we see the trend from the previous year for that same month. Cause you know, we've got history. We know what happened a year ago.
Do you have history with all these reports?
Yes, but I'm, I'm asking you guys if it would be, uh, able to give us a little plot, a line, a point on a graph that says last year, or you can say it, uh, in, in a, you know, separate note. You know, you, you know, this is typical, uh, well, we spent two hundred and fifty thousand more last year this time than we took in. And that wasn't a big deal, but here's why. Or, or we spent a lot because of our emergency that we had due to a forest fire and you know, we didn't take in the revenue. That, that's all. It's just something helpful for us to compare and see if we need to do something to tighten our belt or to, to go the following month, do something different. That's all. A little more information. Um, I like this. This is a good presentation. So you don't misunderstand what I'm saying. I'm, I'm looking for how to react to two hundred thousand dollar transfer that, or when a transfer we ended up spending two hundred thousand more than we can. Knowing that we collect taxes different times of the year, that's, I understand.
The reason we didn't take it in because of the tax season, basically.
Right.
Further discussion, gentlemen?
No.
Here, uh, let's see where we're at. Hearing none. Proceed to vote. All in favor of accepting the November treasurer's report, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Motion carried.
And you didn't have any other thing to?
Nope.
You want me to sign both of them?
I didn't, does she usually have you sign her copy?
She needs me one and she takes one.
Okay.
Right.
She gives Kelly one.
I don't know what she does with them, but.
Okay.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I can sign this one if you wanna take it back.
Stay here, stay here, come back.
Oh, yeah, we gotta shake paws.
This is protocol. We did that last year and we did it last month.
Hope it wasn't too tough.
Do you want me to sign this one too or no?
Is that gonna be your copy?
Uh, I just.
I don't think she cares.
I was gonna say, I, I think you only
I thought we only signed one.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on. Uh, it, oh yeah. International trade, no. You'll come to me.
Good morning.
Hello, sir.
Good morning.
How are you? Sit wherever you'd like.
All right.
Sure, the big boy sit wherever he likes. How are ya?
Are, are you comparing me to an eight hundred pound gorilla?
No, it's a elephant in the room.
I have. Not the opportunity to give this to Brenda ahead of time, any chance, or is this something else?
Um, I could.
It'd be nice.
And we all, we would appreciate, cause we all reviewed this before we sit down.
Okay.
I mean, I don't wanna sit here and read while you're talking.
Right.
I could do that.
If you wouldn't mind, I appreciate it. Thank you.
They're gonna be ready to grill you.
Okay.
All right, we can't yell at you if we don't know ahead of.
We could figure something out.
That's true, that's true, yeah. So, good. Okay?
It's been a, it's been a, a busy month, but, uh, basic, normal stuff. Um, less, uh, less, less big projects than we've done throughout the year. But, um, excuse me, uh, just a few of the highlights. Uh, we had to move some of the tech in the, uh, in the sheriff's office from one side of a wall to the other. It doesn't sound very complicated, but lots of fiber optics were involved. Very detailed stuff. Lots of, lots of fun to do that.
And they bought two new computers over there off of their remaining veil grant?
Off of the veil grant, I replaced the, uh, uh, undersheriff's computer and the detention computer. The detention computer was pretty, pretty hashed. It was also old. Um, most of the computers I'm replacing are somewhere in the neighborhood of, uh, six to eight years old. So, what we're doing now is trying to figure out a replacement schedule so that we can be replacing them every, every three to five years instead of.
What, you heard the old computers go?
Well, that's up to you. Um, I can upcycle some of them. Um, some of them are just going to be, I, I take the hard drives out. Um, there's a protocol, take the hard drives out, destroy them completely, and then we can either refurbish them or recycle the old ones. Some of them are able to be recycled, some of them are not. Um, down there at the bottom of, uh, of this page, it talks about refurbished server. Um, I'm going to be taking some of the old computers that we took out of the phone system, which are some pretty monstrous uh, server systems. And I'll be, uh, refurbishing them over the next several months and upgrading the sheriff's server. He wants like a, an email server so that they can keep their communications internal and, uh, keep everybody on the same page.
Just a raid, yeah, just a storage bunch.
Basically, yes, exactly. The, the, the emails will be kept on the, their server instead of, uh, uh, the way we do it now, which is an offsite, uh, host. So, so everyone can log into any pro, any computer that they, that they have access to and get their emails off in a more secure fashion.
Like an H drive or something.
Right, exactly. So, so that's, that's what we do with some of the computers. Um, the other, you know, I talked last week, uh, last month about the eBay server, our eBay, uh, system. I've also, uh, done some research into a government, uh, Colorado government surplus sale. I'm not seeing the cost effective nature of it. These, they don't, unless you're actually sitting there and you can just walk, walk into the next office and say, here, put this. There's not gonna be a huge amount of, uh, money that comes in from that, unfortunately. Uh, because they just sell things so cheaply, so.
Would the school have any interest in our excess surplus?
They may.
Maybe some kids take them home. What do we have at home?
They may. I could, I could pull the, uh, I could pull the hard drives and flush the memories and make certain that everything's clean and they, they, we could look into that. The other thing is, uh, the Wetmore Library, um, or is asking for a new computer. So I can, uh, take one of our, one of our refurbished and put it down there, so.
Yeah, the problem with, I thought too about the school, but we're not talking about uh, keyboards. We're not about monitors. We're just talking about towers, right?
Uh, yes, pretty much. When it, when a keyboard is done, it's done.
So.
So I, I keep a, I keep wired keyboards on hand and then a few wireless for people that want, uh, wireless keyboards.
So we could give those away perhaps, but there's, there's none of the, yeah, there's more good to tower if, let's say, a family can't afford another three, four hundred dollars to buy.
Well, I do have, I do have a bunch of old wireless, or some wired keyboards that we could, uh, if that's the case, if, if we find that situation. Monitors, not so much. The monitors, uh, they tend to cycle through. I have a few of the eighteen inch monitors. I have one uh, of the twenty-four inch monitors that I use, um, that I, that I keep for emergencies. Oh my goodness, my monitor went out. I need to replace this immediately. Um, so I don't keep a lot of, partly because they're big.
It's not a surplus.
Exactly, exactly. We burn through them.
Good. Since we're talking about refurbishments.
Yes, sir.
When we're these com- desk laptops that we've got bought.
I believe the.
Last year, the year before.
Late twenty sixteen.
Like two years old.
Yes, sir, about two years old.
Donna Hood bought these when she was elected.
Did she buy them herself and pick them out?
I believe so.
She did, yes.
Okay, next time when we redo them, uh, let's make them a little narrower. They're a little bit too big.
You want the more compact versions or?
Crowds us on the table. It also is hard to get in the case.
Oh, I see.
Cases won't, uh, the classic cases are hard.
Yes.
Gonna have to wait about five years.
I don't, I don't care. I'm just making a suggestion. If you're going out buying laptops for other people, and they're, and they're a little cheaper too. I don't know how she picked these. They're nice computers.
These are, yeah, these are very high-end computers.
They're very good. You can still get the same guts and I like the number pad and all that too.
Okay.
But, um, you know, they're just a little bit too big.
Okay.
You notice I don't use them.
Not for me, they're not.
Okay.
It's cause.
Well, I'll consult with each person.
I'd like to use this as my personal.
Maybe if we travel a lot, you're going around and carrying it in a case a lot, it's, uh, you know.
What I'll do is I'll consult. I'll consult with each person when he's trying to replace it.
And it's not that so much as it is, uh, depends on how you use them, you know?
True.
Throw up a big flag in front of people and it's, we're behind our wall here.
Yes.
Maybe the newly elected commissioner would wanna front new laptops.
You know, the last one.
Would that be?
The last one I had his job, did it?
Let's move on, sir?
Just my opinion is on.
What else?
Um, one of the things that we're, that I'm, that is ongoing right now is I have, uh, multiple computers that have been purchased by, uh, the treasurer and the, um, and the assessor upstairs be replacing. We have to replace all of our, uh, Windows ten, or Windows seven operating systems with Windows ten. Um, this goes a long way towards that. It'll actually cut down on the expenses that we, um, have to outlay for software, which I'm doing before the end of the year as it says here in, um, replace Windows seven operating system, uh, so that we don't have to buy it next year. So it goes in under this budget. Even if I spend, uh, uh, I don't have a copy of the, uh, expenses yet, but, um, the way I'm looking at it, even if I were to spend another four thousand dollars on software before the end of the year, I'll still come in about six thousand dollars under budget for the IT budget itself. So, that's what I'm working towards.
How many?
Uh, if I spend four thousand dollars this year, uh, this month, then I will still come in about, at least six thousand dollars under budget for, um, the designated budget this year.
Sure sounds like you would even.
Interesting. Yes, exactly. That's what I'm shooting for.
Dropbox.
The Dropbox is a secure form of communication. Um, as you know, when we email things, there's only a certain amount of, uh, data that can be transferred. Only certain sized files. Dropbox is kind of a file transfer system wherein, yeah, and so I set up a Dropbox for you. I share data. I put, I can put a, a movie, a multiple gigabyte file into Dropbox. And then you, he can share it with you and you can look at it.
That'll have to download.
You don't have to, you don't have to receive it in email. It does download to your computer temporarily. You can, you can review it. You can make modifications to it. Let's say an Excel spreadsheet. One of the things we're doing One of the things we're doing with Dispatch is setting up a, uh, Dropbox for an Excel spreadsheet so that Dispatch can be notified of a fire burn. And then the fire chief will automatically get an update saying, oh, look, I've got a new update on this file. I know that there's a fire burn at such and such county road, and my guys don't have to worry about it if they, if people see smoke there. So there's, that's one of the, that's one of the drop boxes we're setting up. The others are more secure communication for the deputies. Uh, we're, we're looking at creating a log, so that this deputy logs into his Dropbox, he puts down information saying, I did this today, please be on the lookout for such and such, and then everybody.
I have Dropbox on my computer right here.
Yeah, and, and it, it's a great system, it's a great method of sharing. It's actually how we update the new nine-one-one system, um, all the data. Instead of, uh, in the past where I would have to bundle all the files into a zip file and email them off and hope that it was, uh, that, that the people got the, uh.
Uh, current version.
Exactly, I just put it into a Dropbox, they pull it out at their end and download it to the system, so.
I like it because if the disaster on your computer, it's held in the cloud and it's secure.
You can put an app on your phone.
Right, you can go to another computer and get all your files, and I use it for my logs.
Or is it designed physically, using a gun?
Um, I use, I use, uh, basically it's a Google system, so there's a couple of servers around the world that store it. It, I believe Google has triple redundancy. Um, if you go up to the Denver Technical Center, um, you'll see three very nondescript buildings off to the side, those are Google servers. So.
Cool.
So it's stored, it's stored around the world.
Good.
Um, anything else?
What do you, what do you need from us, anything?
Nothing right now.
What would you need in four or five years for an office space?
An office space?
Could that go in the new justice center?
Yes, I have a closet that's about the size of this table, so.
We get a new justice center.
We get a new justice center, it would be nice to have a, an IT office within that space. I would need to have, I would need to have two, you know, one here, one there. Because they would need a complete. Is the peanut gallery?
She was coughing, you cannot be sick here.
I know.
No, she's.
I apologize, I was snarky. Um, they would, they would need a dedicated server. Right now, all of their computers are, their, their, their servers are either in the back room with the nine-one-one system or in the patrol room, and it would be nice to have a dedicated, yeah, consolidated, so that everything's there, everything could be climate controlled. I put a nice little air filter in the server room to keep things clean and whatnot over there. So, having a dedicated room like that with a small office space would be perfect in a, in a justice center.
Well, I think it would be incumbent upon you to keep that in front of us so we don't forget that.
Okay.
As we move along.
I could do that.
Yeah. I don't think it would be a huge.
Get your requirements in, is there?
Alright.
Matter of fact, you probably ought to look at the RFP today.
Okay, I will do that. And I understand there's, the sheriff was talking about, um, some existing justice centers that are pretty phenomenal. It might be in my future to go visit them and talk to the IT guys there, so.
El Paso will be in one of them for sure. Uh, thank you for posting the survey on the county website. If, I meant to talk about that earlier today, if you go to that county website, uh, the very top banner is yellow, bright, highlighted yellow. That is where that survey lives on, uh, on our county homepage, so thank you for doing that.
You were working with Cheryl.
Yes, indeed.
Got it out where it's easy to get to, I know.
Yep, link right up there at the very top, yes, ma'am.
I have a suggestion for the website.
Uh-huh.
Should there be a department for the court?
Since it's not a county, I could, I could create a link to it.
Cause I, I mean, I know how to, I know how to find it because I'm pretty, you know, Google and I'd be friend. But not everybody would, and they'd think, well, maybe if I go to the county website, I can get to.
Departments.
You know, cause the assessors, you know, that goes to an outside link too, but, um, you know, just a link so that.
I could, I could talk with Kay and Christina about, uh.
You know, if they want to find the document or something, it'd be nice to have it in a, a place that's easy to.
That's accessible. That's a great suggestion.
Same as human services.
Anything else, sir?
They, they do have a, they do have a website.
I know, but on the county one?
Mm-hmm, yep.
I haven't looked at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Be well.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome to shake Ms. Kelly's hand if you so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If you want to keep on our good side, you better.
We're not gonna take a four and a half minute break, we're gonna roll right into Human Resources and Finance Department. Oh my gosh, I've got this stack of. You can, I can say you need a handcart to haul all that in here. Final budget, by golly.
That and much more.
Good. Thank you.
Jesus, she'll just keeps on showing.
Uh, bless you, I guess you've got to be careful about coughing and sneezing. Commissioner. Good morning.
You just have to do it if you like.
How are you? Yeah, that's right. I can do this as the go, so don't wait on me.
I have, um, first and foremost, uh, three resolutions. First one would be to adopt the budget, the second to set the mill levies, and the third to appropriate sums of money. They're all statutory, so they're just normal. I have two additional supplemental budgets. The Conservation Trust, when, uh, the Rotary asked for their money, then it put us over on the expense on that side. And then the donation by David Watts, uh, for the runway construction, uh, money that passed on. I need those five signed.
Now, should you run that kind of stuff past me? Cause I would understand that I, it should be by motion in a vote.
I penciled it in, so, but I'm not positive on the numbers we need to.
So you need a motion for each resolution, is that what we're saying?
You could do it as a.
As a group.
As a, a general motion for all of them.
How many did you have?
It was, let's see, twenty-eight through thirty-two, maybe?
The motion to identify them. Resolutions eighteen dash twenty-eight.
I move we, uh, accept the budget resolutions to adopt the budget. Resolution eighteen twenty-eight, eighteen twenty-nine, eighteen thirty, eighteen thirty-one, and eighteen thirty-two.
Seventh motion? They're moving second to adopt resolutions eighteen twenty-eight through eighteen thirty-two pertaining to the budget. Discussion, Ms. Kelly?
No, that's, he just said to adopt the budget, and I thought.
To adopt the resolutions.
I said resolutions.
Now, and so, we may be getting the cart before the horse here, if one of these resolutions have to do with that budget.
And here is the budget.
So we would be adopting something we haven't seen in its final format, correct?
No.
I haven't looked at them, so I don't know what they are exactly, other than I was trying to listen as you went along, so.
It's the resolution to approve the budget.
Okay, all of these?
These are separate.
Ones to set the mill levy, ones to set the appropriations of money, and then ones to approve the budget.
Okay, so it was the one about approving the budget was the one I was.
Well, and I didn't know which, cause when you sign this, you've approved it or you've done that, so I didn't know which order that had to be. Because if you didn't approve it, you wouldn't be signing, I don't know, I, I didn't have a, I didn't have a preference.
It doesn't matter to me.
Are you gonna give us a copy of that today?
I need all seven of these signed, and then you can take yours with you.
Would you mind emailing to me the final budget on the chronicle?
I will as soon as I get this back to, um, to Vernon, because until it's signed, it, it wasn't real.
Right.
And then it will be real and I will ship it.
So it's just, it's just process, I guess I'm asking about, we haven't seen that yet.
You know what the numbers were when you finished?
If they haven't changed.
And that's where I would have asked if I had changed.
Uh, further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed, uh, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, hosnay, motion carries, now we'll sign the documents.
June, here we'll start, three there.
Like ghostwriter sign.
What if it failed?
And she had to get notes.
Yeah.
You guys would be not getting paid in January.
It might have failed for five minutes and then what do you do? So we got initial, is that what you're asking?
Uh, and they do have signatures by the little yellow guy.
So five yellow, you want an initial or a signature?
A signature, please. And I believe it goes chairman, vice chairman, and member.
That's good, because that's how I did it.
See, you're not a rookie.
Actually, we're not either now, as of the twenty-second of November.
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, that's true.
We're ignorant second-termers.
It is weird when it's not the January thing.
Right, yeah.
Cause yeah, yours throws me off by a year.
Yeah, I was thinking about that the other day with watching some pro football games, thinking about their definition of rookie.
They all really threw everybody off this year. People said, well, we just ran, why did you run?
We have to run again, I never quit running. One month and not having to run.
Yeah, that's like twenty-two, twenty-two seconds, yeah.
Didn't stop.
Well, and it's always odd anyway, because it's, the election's in November, but the takeover is until January, but this time it was not that way, so.
There's no initial on all of them there.
Really, um.
I don't know why she said initial, she wanted to sign.
We don't have to initial somewhat, just.
I didn't mean to say that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I wasn't. Missing something.
Three, I guess.
Okay.
That's got all three on it. Better check if we hand them to you.
Okay, sorry.
Okay. She needs to bring donuts too.
Seven copies, because we each get a copy?
Yes, um, Kelly gives a designated copy, the auditor, the state of Colorado, myself, and all three of you.
I'll go sign this one.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Has Stephanie started? When will she start?
Yesterday, I started first, I'm not sure when she came in or if she came back or what she had done.
Yeah, she definitely cleaned.
She was here when I left.
Took the broom, couldn't find the broom this morning, so.
Well, that's good news.
Well, unless we were trying to sweep the front walk, which I did with the dust mop. Cause I couldn't even, couldn't even get into the scale house, door's frozen shut. Or the lock is frozen, something.
I cannot get a hold of one of them, their, their voice mailbox is full. And, and so I, I'm just, I'm dead in the water, morning.
How much, how much do we, what is incumbent upon us to get a hold of that?
Well, and, and that's the thing is, um, there were three, two that are, are, um.
Well, one we rejected immediately.
Right, so that left two, then one of the two I can't get a hold of, so I don't know what to do. It's not like it's a big pool where.
How many, how many efforts have you made?
Every day I've called that phone.
So, four, five, six?
Hmm, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, probably eight times. Cause I haven't done it today, today would be nine.
Our applicants for the.
Maintenance.
Yeah, I wanna, what I really'd like is, if we have two viable candidates, let's get them in, let's talk to them, but if we can't get a hold of one of them, we have our hands full.
Well, we had three, right, or no?
Right.
Yes.
So I'd say drop to one and get the other two, so now you're down to one.
Well, do we want a discount?
Cause you can't get a hold of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, I say so.
But then that really leaves us just one.
I, I understand that, but we need.
No, I, I'm good with that, I just was trying to.
Giving you my opinion on the situation, that's it. You can't get a hold of them after eight days, either they didn't provide a good phone number, or they don't care.
Would you like to interview the one, then? Cause I've talked to him to make sure that he wasn't, um, set on having both positions.
Go ahead, here's what I would suggest, let's go ahead and set an opponent for the run, for sure. And let's continue to attempt to, um, contact the other person. And if it comes down to, we just cannot get a hold of him, we'll just move forward because we've got a county to run and things to take care of and.
Snow to shovel.
I agree with your assessment.
Cause that's our reason, so let's go ahead and set something up with the one gentleman, and it is, it is both men, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause if that's all we had, we'd interview him anyway.
Right.
Well, that's right. We wouldn't say, well, no, wait, let's see if we.
No, 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 let's do it, and we may come back and say, let's keep the job open, we're not happy yet, but.
Yeah, that's certainly possible.
Let's definitely get the one going and let's continue to try the other gentleman.
Okay.
And hopefully get a hold of him, cause I hate for him to apply and miss it because he's got phone issues, I mean, that's just, that would be terrible.
Understandable.
Understandable.
Anything else, ma'am?
I feel that was not that bad.
Great job. No, that was.
Do you feel it was that good?
Reasonable.
I feel like it was a whole lot of effort and a whole lot of my time, that's what I feel.
You feel tired?
Not worth the money, not worth the money.
Well, as our finance officer, good job.
Um, but we may be looking into, because it is not, I thought you only wanted it by email.
Oh.
When you said that, I thought that was why you were telling me that.
Well, I, I'd really like both.
Oh, no, awesome.
If you don't mind.
No.
Okay, so what's the problem, is it?
Yeah.
Um, it is just too much at one time.
What, how do we fix it?
Probably hire another John.
And how do we do that?
Not my call. But for the six thousand dollars, not worth it, not worth it.
What six thousand dollar?
That's what I got to take over, the accounting part, and not worth it by any means.
Yeah, it's a lot of work.
And I don't want the extra, I'm not saying this because I want more money. It is just a huge amount of, it's just a huge amount of work that I'm taking home. Because it's all at the same time, I mean, it just is too.
If we bleated out over a year, it wouldn't be bad, but.
But it's just, because now we're finished here, but then I'll, I haven't even started balancing out. And that usually would have been done a couple of days ago, but I had to finish this, and so it, it's just, it's really, I was hoping it, at the time, a year was over, and I don't mind trying again to see if it, that I thought I could get it streamlined a little bit better to make it not be so much, just, it, it's like, it's like having five elections at the same time, you know, just, and, and, and you know it's gonna end, so you think, okay, I can do this, but then you think, phew, is that not good?
Let me go back. I get it. And when I said, what do we do to fix it, and you said, it's our call, I don't know what to do. Are you recommending we hire another person?
And, and I don't know, because I know that you can't, um, you know, I'm absolutely willing to give up the six thousand. I, I'm not willing to go back, no, but, no, this needs to be said, I'm good with this, to go backwards on my pay, because I'm still doing the other jobs. I don't know if you could find, is John, I believe, between the two, the budget and the other was about fifteen or sixteen thousand a year.
Is it sporadic enough that, uh, or does it have to like a surge, is there a surge, and then there's times where you don't do anything, is it a halftime job?
Um, every month I do the accounting part and the, and the bookkeeping, but it just, I, you know, it's, I, I think I'm speaking a little prematurely, but I would like, that we just need to know that in the back of our minds, because it's, it's, it's not worth it.
I don't want it in the back of my mind, I want to solve an issue, if there's an issue we're unaware of that is an inappropriate amount of additional workload that was stuck on an employee, and I don't mean stuck, but I mean, asked of a dedicated employee, I don't want it just in the back, back of my mind, I would like to face this and say, what are we gonna do to resolve it if there's an issue here? First, we have to resolve, agree that there's an issue. B, what is it that needs to get fixed, how do we fix it, and let's go ahead and do something if that's the case. That would be my procedure, I'm not speaking for my fellow commissioners, but I don't want it in the back burner. If it's an issue today, I'd like to work on it today.
Well, once I get the budget on, then it's not going to be an issue for a little while.
Right.
But that's just, I just think you need to know that it was an exhausting year. That, that's where I'm at with it, I'm not asking you to fix it.
Okay.
But that you need to know that it is really.
Say these words very often, but as the HR person. You don't hear me say these words very often, but as the HR person, can you and I work on this over the upcoming months to figure out how we can alleviate this disaster next year?
It's not a disaster, it's just exhausting.
It is a disaster. They are overworking an employee.
You're not overworking me, I'm just choosing to maybe not lose seventeen days vacation a second year.
And let me tell you, that is a disaster in my opinion, okay? I don't ask people to stay here after work hours on a, on a continuing basis. I mean, every now and then we pitch in, we do, we have to. I wanted to get a janitorial person, excuse me, a cleaning person here ASAP because I don't, every, all departments pitched in to help clean up during a short period of time, but that's not their job. And I don't feel, I don't feel we need to burden, overburden you unfairly is what I'm trying to get at. And I'd like to fix this if this is a problem.
And, and, and it's, it's not a problem, but I, I just think that, that in the future, for the future, that because...
I'm gonna disagree with you. You with seventeen days vacation is, is a problem that I want to solve, and I'm, you don't understand, I don't think, because I'm on your side, I wanna think...
Well, but I don't want you to think I'm whining.
That is not...
That I have too much work to, because I am well-paid and I don't mind working hard. But it was just that borderline of just there. And now this'll be over, so I'm gonna feel better because it's done.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too. It's unfortunate that obviously this budget thing is all-consuming.
Well, it's, and a lot of it is the, um, one of the things, um, is the finance, our, our system itself... Is you would not believe what it takes to process a supplemental budget. It is unbelievable and it is so stressful. Is I, I really physically end up unrolling the budget from the prior year, changing those totals and rerolling it, and it is extremely stressful. I really believe there's got to be an easier way, but not with this particular system.
You know, I thought about it too. Sam Donardo, we hire, we pay, he's our CPA. And seems to me we ought to be able to leverage some of his expertise and, not him necessarily, but people, to actually do some of the things that you're doing. You don't have to do these by hand.
Well, that's why this ended up being there, because John never did those.
I know.
And Sam said that I was to do it.
See.
And so he's added that too, that was just really...
Sam added it to you?
Yes.
See, well, that's something that we can talk, that maybe because he scoped a certain amount of work and blah, blah, blah. But he's the, uh, that, and, you know, it's right there, I wouldn't want to go hire a rookie, we're gonna fire if we were to do this. Let's say we take it the next step. Would be to get somebody to help you do the books. Well, they'd have to learn it all over again and, and get into the system, and then we, we might have to update the computers, which is a problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm hearing also, that there's a system issue.
That's right, there is.
Personnel issue.
That's right. We don't have to keep with this darn system that doesn't, is out of date, and it should be more user-friendly. So we need to work, and that's the thing to work. I think, ever listening to a talk, it's okay to continue for now, but we ought to be looking at how do we leverage the money we already spent with Sam, if we have to increase that budget for X dollars for some, something, we just need to talk about it at some point.
If I may, I'm gonna, if I may, I'm gonna work with Don on this over the next period of time.
Yeah.
Come back and we'll just leave this as an open discussion for where we're gonna go from here.
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
Yeah. I think it needs to be worked on. I think something has to be done. Uh, cause I'm, I have been, you know, I've been surprised by, you know, a lot, I've been dealing with Sam quite a bit, trying to understand what he does, when we have these issues, that we try to figure out what fund is fenced, what's not, how do we spend this, what's the legal parts of this. He knows it, and we're paying him to do it, and, uh, and we ought to be able to figure out how to get it so that we've got the same system between us and, and able to move things more cleanly than doing a lot of things by hand that you're doing.
Yeah, because there's, it's, there's an awful lot that, that's by hand.
That's right.
A lot that's by hand.
So, I like that idea, just look, you know, we, she didn't ever bring, she says, I don't need a budget. Well, that's not true. You know, remember that, we came to us, uh, when we went through it. So we need to spend money to keep track of our books. That, that's okay, that's a requirement.
And, and you know, most, because you know, with the treasure, and, and the booking, it's not that, but nine funds and then all by hand, you know, there's, there's a lot by hand. And, and it's just time con... The budget part is I will physically go in and put each of these numbers in that computer.
See, that's just silly.
And, and so, see, there's a lot, yeah, there's just...
So...
So when it's done, I'm gonna say, yeah, I'm good to go.
We need to get somebody in Sam's office to help us understand what the issues are, what we can do, and make some recommendations with you.
But you know, a way to have the finance system that, that I could load this, but see, with the Excel, and, and Chuck's going to come in where he pulled that off, but it's still not... It is still not automated. I still had to go in and put all of the twenty-seventeen's actuals.
That's just ridiculous.
And, and I don't know what to do about it because it, it, it won't do it.
Well, Sam would...
Well, I think we move forward. Uh, I think we hear what you're saying. Uh, I know stressful time, I would guess in two or three weeks, you'll do just what you said, kind of breathe out and go...
Yeah, and I'm jealous, it's like, phew.
But...
But let's not do it again.
We can't just turn a blind eye to that issue.
That's what I'm trying to say. Thank you for saying that.
First of all, we need to determine what the issue is if we have one, and then look at some possibilities.
Right.
But you know, if there's something that ACS or a different programming module that I could add to it.
Right.
If there's something different that...
We're receptive to those concepts.
You know, something that would be where I could just print it and then make the changes, but you know...
Sure.
Seventy-two thousand entries and it's just odd.
Could I just make one suggestion? Um, would you visit with other counties our size and say, what, how do you do? What system do you do? How many people do it? Give us some, you know, we're behind the eight ball, or we're in front of the eight ball, you know what I'm saying? Is there...
Sam knew other counties too, doesn't he?
Um, you know, I think they do more school districts than they do a lot of school... On there.
Yeah.
And I know there's probably less than two handfuls that use the system that we do. And everyone else has went to like Tyler and the other, um, and they are expensive, and we cannot afford it. I mean, it, it just is really, um, huge.
There may be ways to transition into it that we can...
On there.
If I can, let, let me say I'm gonna work with him, and we hear what you're saying, and I think we'd like to look into it and see if we could come up with something that's gonna help the process in the future. Is that reasonable?
Yep.
On there.
Good. Okay, thank you. Yep, great job. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Easy for us to sit here and say, don't get frustrated, but don't get frustrated.
It was long.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Anything else, gentlemen, under staff reports?
Running very late.
Yeah, running very late. Can we move on? Any unfinished business? Okay, we'll move to new business. Uh, if it's an action item, we'll ask for public comment as well. Uh, approval of the weed management plan, the implementation plan, and the bylaws. I've worked with the weed board. Uh, we've gone through these three documents, forwarded them to you so you could have a chance to review those. The board is obviously satisfied with those documents, that's why they sent them to us, so I would make them, I would move to approve those three documents, uh, if nothing else.
I'll second it, let's talk about it.
We moved it seconded to adopt the weed management plan, implementation plan, and bylaws. Discussion?
The only thing I was gonna ask, Tom, these are, are they a lot different? Did, did they have a bunch of changes? I didn't think...
Uh, most of it was formatting, we added, updated the lists, uh, at the end of those documents, the A, B, and C list with weed. Uh, these, these documents by statutory requirement are to be reviewed every five years.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So we're, they were last done in two thousand thirteen. So it's more of an, of a housekeeping detail. I didn't see...
I didn't see anything that I could change.
Was really, uh...
And the dollar figures and all that jazz.
Uh, yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's been, it's been in that document for the last five years that that...
That's what they're holding.
They could help private landowners up to one thou, or they could apply for help for up to one thousand dollars. We had changed it to five hundred, then they changed it back to a thousand, so... Certainly would answer any other questions if I can that you have, but, uh, I just didn't...
But you went through it with them, so...
Yeah, it's pretty much standard business.
Good.
I don't know if that's appropriate to even say that, but I didn't see anything that would cost any alarm, so...
I, I read them, honestly saw that I didn't understand to be truthful, but, I mean, I didn't see any issues with me.
Okay, and if there's any questions I can try to answer, I'll be glad to do that, but... If you have none, then...
How's the, um, the partnership going with, uh, Warfino?
Well, good, yeah, Warfino County, um... Charles Bryant is our weed manager and...
I was impressed with him.
Yeah, I think he's doing a good job. Obviously not doing much, he's getting ready to write these grants for twenty nineteen, and, uh, so, um... I think that's gonna work out well. Further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to, or, public comment? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Carry? They will file those, uh, with... Roger Squire, I'm gonna keep those on file, file.
Says prepared by a couple of these, is that necessary?
Pardon me? Uh, prepared by these, this board.
That's the board.
Yeah. So, at their next meeting, we'll go through and sign.
All right, yeah, that one makes more sense cause it's up there. I thought I was waiting for somebody to say it.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Uh, ordinance for penalties for defacing or damaging county property, Mr. Smith?
I think procedurally, the way we need to approach this is, first of all, for you to decide whether or not this is something you want to approve. If you wanna make any changes or amendments, if you're prepared to go forward with it, then I would read it as ordinance number eighteen dash zero one, with the understanding we have the final reading on, on December thirty-one at that meeting. But if there are any questions or discussion about this, that needs to happen first.
Looked pretty good, and did you pick it up off a, you had some template too, didn't you?
Uh, most of this was my own.
Was it?
I really didn't have any particular, some of the definitions, well, some of the definitions, I referred to definitions that are already appeared in statutes, I think, so I lifted those out of legal definitions that already exist, but the rest was my own.
Oh, it looked pretty good.
Um, is there any concern on this as a legal document that Kelly's attestation, uh, the first time is at the top of the second page? Should those all be on the same page? Does it matter?
It doesn't, but we could certainly...
Scroll them down.
Rearrange it somehow to get, uh, where all the signatures are on the same page.
I don't know, I, I'm just asking. If it doesn't matter, we can leave it, I don't...
It probably doesn't, but it, uh, it might look better to have, and that would leave a blank space, and what I generally do is just type in, intentionally left blank, so there's no question about that. So we could certainly do that.
I'm in favor of moving forward with this. I think, uh, Kit came to us and...
Yeah, he means it.
It was a reasonable request.
And what I would say is that this, what he's asking for here is something, there are state statutes that would apply to this where the district attorney could prosecute for this. The problem is, I don't think the district attorney is gonna be terribly interested in prosecuting these, and would plea bargain them out or just dismiss them. If we have an ordinance, we have more authority and more power over the DA, cause initially the district attorney is the one who should prosecute these. Uh, if the district attorney still doesn't want to, which would certainly affect your consideration about the DA budget, but you could also authorize me as the county attorney to go ahead and prosecute an ordinance violation. So we could go forward with it, and this does bring money into the county, um, through the, uh, the fines would be split up between half to the county and half to the political subdivision that's...
You know, I was gonna ask you about the fines, Clint, is, is, are these typical, or is this enough to make a difference to somebody not to... If it's published in the paper, that if a kid's out there and he thinks he gets a break in, he starts fooling around, is it gonna deter him?
Uh, I don't know if the fine would deter anybody, I mean, they don't think they're gonna get caught, they just don't think ahead of time with it. But the fines are in line with the fines we have in our off-highway vehicle ordinance, our open burning ordinance, the fines are similar.
And is it a misdemeanor?
It's a class-two petty offense is how it's classified. There's no jail sentence involved with this, so that's why we can do it by ordinance, if there's a jail sentence. We can impose jail sentences for certain things, but it's a lot more complicated, so we do it this way.
Yeah, and I'm hoping that if, I'm assuming there will be some signage born out of this, and hopefully that signage posted properly will do as much...
And a lot of the things, the property, even though we list all the political subdivisions in here, I don't know that the library district has, you know, any skin in this game particularly, but the, uh... Especially for the fire protection district, having the cisterns that they wanna have stationed around the county, um, vandalism, it could be a problem, and they will, those will be fenced or enclosed somewhere, and there will be signage, that's a requirement.
Yeah, you know, uh, after I really got to thinking about this, even probably more critical would be our road and bridge equipment sitting around the county. Uh, we may not have signs on those, but...
Right, and, and it's, the signage is really only required for the, the provision about essentially trespassing, section two of part two. Um, that requires the signage being put, you don't have to have signs on the rest of it, so, so anything that's done to any road and bridge equipment, that's...
Yeah, we can still pursue even though it didn't have a sign on it.
You could even the library, if somebody was carving his initials in the table.
I could do that.
Okay.
That'd be a good thing.
So, do we need to move to adopt this and then go to first reading?
I would, yeah, the recommendation would be if this meets with your approval, you make a motion, uh, to go forward with the first reading on this, and then I would read it, and then we'd have it published in the next, uh, the edition of the Sentinel, it'll come out next Friday, and then it'll be on for final reading and, and adoption on December thirty-one.
And the entire document needs to be read?
It does just this first time, and the second time it doesn't have to be read, just reference to title.
Okay. Group's pleasure?
Moving to adopt ordinance number eighteen oh one.
Uh, I'll second the motion. We moved and seconded to adopt ordinance number eighteen dash zero one and have first reading. I, I beg your, uh, pardons, I don't know if this is a debatable motion or not. Uh, I'll go ahead and ask for a discussion. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, uh, public comment? Sorry. Hearing none, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay? Carry, counsel?
Okay, I'll read proposed ordinance number eighteen dash zero one. An ordinance of Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, making it unlawful to tamper with, deface, or otherwise damage property belonging to the county of Custer... Or to other governmental entities also designated as political subdivisions of the state of Colorado, and providing penalties for such unlawful conduct. Be it ordained by the Board of County Commissioners of Custer County, a political subdivision of the state of Colorado, that whereas section thirty dash eleven dash one oh one, sub-paragraph two, CRS... Gives the Board of County Commissioners the authority to adopt and enforce ordinances regarding health, safety, and welfare issues, and to provide penalties for the violation of saying... And whereas counties, municipalities, and special districts are classified as political subdivisions pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado. Custer County is a political subdivision, the towns of Silvercliff and Westcliff are political subdivisions. And the Custer County School District, the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District, the West Custer County Library District, the West Custer County Hospital District, and the Round Mountain Water and Sanitation District... Are all political subdivisions of the state of Colorado. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners for Custer County has determined that the protection of property belonging to all political subdivisions, whether located in the incorporated areas... Of the above, of the above-named towns, or within the unincorporated areas of the county, is a matter of concern to the citizens of the county whose taxes pay for said property, and that a county ordinance should be adopted... Whose taxes pay for said property, and that a county ordinance should be adopted, making it unlawful to cause harm to such property. Or to trespass upon the premises where such property may be located, and to, and to provide penalties for such unlawful behavior. Now therefore, the Board of County Commissioners declares as follows. This ordinance number eighteen dash zero one shall be known and may be cited as the tampering with public property ordinance. Part one, definitions, for purpose of this ordinance number eighteen dash zero one, the following definitions shall apply. Public property means anything of value owned by a political subdivision of Custer County, which is located within the boundaries of said county. And includes things of value located within the incorporated limits of the towns of Silver Cliff and West Cliff. Tamper means to interfere with something improperly, to meddle with it, or to make unwarranted and slash or unauthorized alterations in its condition. Damage means to cause physical harm to something in such a way as to impair its value, usefulness, or normal function. Deface means to alter the appearance of something by removing, distorting, marring, adding to, or covering all or part of a thing. Part two, unlawful acts, section one. It shall be unlawful for any person to tamper with, deface, or otherwise damage public property physically located within the Custer County, County of Custer. And belonging to a political subdivision of the state of Colorado. Section two, if public property is defined, as defined in this ordinance eighteen dash zero one. Is located on premises that are fenced or are otherwise enclosed in a manner designed to discourage unauthorized persons to enter onto said premises. And if signage is conspicuously posted on said premises, making specific reference to this ordinance eighteen dash zero one. And stating that entry thereon is prohibited, then it shall be unlawful for a person to enter onto said premises. Without proper authorization from the political subdivision that owns the public property located thereon. Part three, penalties, section one. Any person who commits a violation of part two, section one of this ordinance commits a class-two petty offense. Under section thirty dash fifteen dash four oh two, sub-paragraph one CRS, and upon conviction thereof. Shall be punished by a fine as follows, sub-paragraph A, two hundred dollars if the dollar amount of the damage is less than five hundred dollars. Sub-paragraph B, five hundred dollars if the dollar amount of the damage is five hundred dollars or more, but less than two thousand dollars. Sub-paragraph C, one thousand dollars if the dollar amount of the damage is two thousand dollars or more. Sub-paragraph D, in addition to the imposition of a fine, the convicted person shall be ordered to pay restitution to the political subdivision. Section two, any person who commits a violation of part two, section two of this ordinance nineteen, excuse me, eighteen dash zero one. Commits a class-two petty offense under section thirty dash fifteen dash four oh two, sub-paragraph one CRS, and upon conviction thereof, shall be punished by a fine of two hundred fifty dollars. Section three, the penalty assessment procedure set forth in section sixteen dash two dash two oh one CRS, shall be followed by law enforcement officers. Charged with the enforcement of this ordinance. Section four, all fines assessed for violations of this ordinance shall be paid to the treasurer of Custer County. All revenues generated through the payment of such fines shall be paid into the general fund and shall be allocated as follows. Fifty percent to the political subdivision whose property was damaged, or was subject to an unlawful entry, and fifty percent to the Custer County General Fund. Section five, a person convicted of a violation of section one or section two of part one of this ordinance. Shall be subject to a surcharge of ten dollars pursuant to section thirty dash fifteen dash four oh two, sub-paragraph one CRS. Part eight, effective date, this ordinance shall be effective immediately following adoption on second reading. And shall apply to all violations occurring or committed on or after said date. Introduced, read, and adopted on first reading on the fifth day of December twenty eighteen. And ordered published in the Sangre de Cristo Sentinel. The Board of County Commissioners for Custer County, State of Colorado, signature lines for Tommy G. Flower Chairman, William R. Canda Vice Chairman, J.D. Prince Commissioner. With the seal for Kelly Camper to attest, or attestation by Kelly Camper as the county clerk and recorder. And then it goes on to say, and this would be for the next time around, adopted on second and final reading on the thirty-first day of December twenty eighteen. And ordered published by reference to title only in the Sangre de Cristo Sentinel, and signature lines.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
So Brenda, can you change those numbers then, and put the dates in, and thank you.
Okay, first reading has occurred.
So when's the second reading?
Would be December thirty-one, thirty-first.
We'll add that to the agenda, Miss Brenda, we haven't.
And I guess now that it's been read, if there's any additional public comments or questions, since.
I've just had a question, cause it's basically Silver Cliff and West Cliff, proper, what about San Isabel and Wetmore?
It's all the unincorporated areas of the county. The two towns are political subdivisions, everything else is part of the county.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, okay. We'll move on then to the weed grant application, we have a copy of that, I believe.
Yes, we do.
I double-checked the email I received from Charles Bryant, and he indicated that in this particular grant, they did not, he did not choose to. Pursue private land owner funding, so the fourteen thousand dollars is broken out as into herbicide, two thousand, mapping fifteen hundred. Equipment, thirty-five hundred, contract labor, which is huge, six thousand, because we had budgeted for that, so that will help offset that. And public outreach, education, thousand dollars, for a total of fourteen thousand dollars, this is from the state. Noxious weed fund grant. No. Matching portion?
I move we adopt that we sign the pre-grant application form.
Okay.
Authorize the read, the committee to get the grant, apply for the grant.
I'll second.
The movement is seconded to sign the. Pre-grant application form for the Colorado Noxious Weed Program, discussion?
We question the other grants titled the same, two, right? You got two?
Uh.
Is this, what is this?
Probably a duplicate, one of those is probably mine.
Has a different.
Is this a grant that would be administered through our?
Yeah, pardon me, sir?
Would this grant be administered through our treasurer?
Um, no, I would guess, well, I can't answer that for sure.
Through our what?
Go through our treasurer.
I would say this will go through Warfino, the weed manager.
That's what I'm thinking, based on the department, these Custer Warfino weed department.
I just didn't know if we were gonna get revenue incentive or.
I'm guessing, and I can certainly follow up, this would go.
Kind of a problem either way, I'm just curious how that's working.
Yeah, I never thought about asking.
That's a good question.
But I'm assuming as a manager, he'd probably go to his account. We can hold off, if you want me to find out?
I don't think it matters either way.
I'll find out and report back, for sure, okay. Take further discussion?
Make sure he gets it, I guess, really good question.
Yeah, he'll, he'll report back to the weed board. Public comment? Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Carrie's. Let's see.
So who signs here, Tom?
Uh.
So this is a submission, that would be.
Him, Charles Bryant and their county administrator, uh, I know his name, can't think of it.
Down there.
Yeah. Okay, I'll give this back to Miss Brenda, and we'll move forward with that, thank you, gentlemen, yeah, I think this is, I don't know what this was.
Yeah, the weed wire came from, thank you.
Okay, I guess that wraps us up for the, oh, no, wait a minute.
Legal publication also.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was kinda teasing Angie back there, I was wanting to jump and say, okay, we're done, after she said.
After the legal publication.
Yeah, then we're done, okay.
Sorry, you're not up yet.
Next item of business, legal publication bid request for twenty nineteen, Miss Brenda sent that out, included us as well on that.
What date did you put a deadline for?
Twenty-first.
Okay.
So we will.
Seal bids on the thirty-first.
They'll be open on the thirty-first.
Yes.
Yep.
So, were you expecting anything other than informational item here, Miss Brenda?
Um, just you're okay to go ahead and send these letters?
Oh, you haven't sent those yet?
No.
Okay.
They're due by the twenty-first.
Since, it's the same as last year's later wasn't it, I thought?
Yeah, I just changed the dates.
Changed the date, yeah, I think it's fine.
Okay, I suppose maybe since it will end up being a legal matter, I would move to approve the. Letters going out requesting legal publication bids. Is there a second?
I'll second.
The movement is seconded to authorize.
Sorry.
That's right.
No, no, I didn't, I told them.
Uh, notice of legal publication, discussion, public comment. Hearing none, proceed to vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Carrie's. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, yes, Bill had, oh, I got him, sorry.
Do them here, you got, oh, you got the actual. Why not?
I don't, I don't have a signature line, so.
Yeah, I don't think we do, I mean, we can if we want, but.
You did, you did the motion, so, and that's what it says in here, that.
Right.
It's just a notice, is what they.
Does that have to be a county publication?
If, if there's a newspaper of record in the county, yes, it has to be, otherwise you can go outside the county.
That was exactly where I was headed. Okay, we'll move on, tourism, budget, et cetera.
Et cetera, you got it.
Good morning and welcome, thank you for your patience.
Well, thank you.
It's about time you got here.
I know, to be honest, she.
We've been waiting for hours.
She, she offered to put me on earlier, and I says, no, it can be at the end, cause I like to hear what's going on.
Good.
And everything, so, okay, first of all, I just wanted to give you some updates regarding the tourism board. They're already wanting to revamp the budget, and I feel now's not the time, I just wanna know what the process is. Seems like we need to, my understanding, be more into the year before we come before and amend it to the budget.
Revamp it?
Well, they're amending it. I did not email this to you, because we haven't worked at, on our meeting, it was just sent. And so we haven't even gone through it as far as the working board itself.
Can you just share what the general issues were, or you wanna wait until they're done with it?
We'll wait, I just want to make you be aware, because they're gonna, I think, one, they are gonna want to, boom, move on it, and I feel we need to wait. And see where we're at, we got a little over a thousand dollars more than what was anticipated for November. We got the nineteen thousand, and Charlie had estimated eighteen thousand. We haven't gotten December's, money's in yet from the treasurer, so we don't know what that is. But you know, he's, he's done a good job with everything, but my concern is. The, what they wanna extend it to is more than what it should be, I just wanna know what the procedure is, so that way when they come, when we have a meeting next Tuesday.
I think the procedure would be that your board would make the recommendation.
Right.
On what you all decide as a board.
Right.
And then bring it to the commissioners for our.
Okay. And my basic recommendation is gonna ask them to wait until this, in January, when you might have some new people involved.
Internal discussion.
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, cause it seems like the new people would.
You guys is the majority of the board, however you guys want.
Exactly, exactly.
Do you think the budget's gonna be more than what we've already approved, or amended budget?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes, definitely, yes.
Can't spend what you don't have, what does that mean?
Well, exactly, exactly, so I just wanted to make you aware.
Okay, that's an internal thing.
Yeah.
Make your recommendation, then come to us.
And I, I just, it's like I needed to be able to say, okay, this is, you know, our procedure.
Majority of your committee, of your board votes, whatever the majority says, then you bring it to us.
I foresee that we might need to have a workshop to kinda revamp what was done, but anyhow, that's just the, the way it is. So I just wanted to know that, you know, since all the turmoil, and when I was the only one on the board, I'd done what I can to kinda keep the tourism board going, and the next steps, and part of that was. Getting bylaws, trying to get new people on the board. Part of that in Sep, in October, I thought it was September, but in October, started working with the grant application, the mini-grant process. When really, I was the only one, but it, you know, I was familiar with it, for our mini-grant thing that was applied for in November. So, you know, I kept those things going. I, I, I just wanted to let you, a couple of things that came up in regards to the lodging tax, and what we can do as far as the tourism board. We, we have a, a letter that we can send, that we send, and I've done this in the past. The new board doesn't know this yet, because we haven't got there yet, we just, new board, we worked on budget. And some of them are off doing their own thing, and we haven't sat down to say, this is what we need to be doing and going forward, which hopefully would be in January. Because everybody's new, maybe two months on or three, and budget was our main priority. But what we do is if we know, like for instance, a lady that I knew had their home as far as an Airbnb. And she was gonna be renting out, so I said, you know, you need to be doing the lodging tax. I guess as Airbnb, it's automatically taken out, but she didn't know at the time. So I sent her a letter advising her what she needed to be doing, plus, I had downloaded the forms from the state of Colorado. In which I emailed over to her, so that way she knew full well, and you know, and I documented that. Kelly can't say, you know, who's paying or not, but before you were on doing it. We had a way to kinda find out, like, if we knew, like, say, Antlers was paying, and West Cliff was paying, and we listed a third party. We could give you a note listing to three people, and we could say, are these three people all paying? And you could say no, well, we would automatically know, the no was that new person, but you're not telling it, you're not saying who's not.
Yeah, and I'm not, I can't.
I, no, you can't, but if we, several years ago, we, we could take a list in, like, said, we had a list of five, and we knew four was paying, and one wasn't. You could say all are paying except for one, and you can't tell us what that one is, but we would know, because we knew the other four were paying.
I don't even think, I gotta see into that, cause I don't even think I can say all of these are paying except one.
I thought it was not to share any information pertaining.
Okay, cause when we first did it, we were able to do that.
Yeah.
So I just need to get that clarification. So I just need to get that clarification.
I, I think you can give me a list and I can look at them, and if I see on there there's one not paying, that's when I notify Department of Revenue, then they let them know.
Right. Okay.
We may have to research that.
Well, see, and that's where, what we did is when we found out it wasn't, we had kind of a standard letter that went out with a copy, which we just did, um, earlier this year. There was some stuff where the state of Colorado came out, we had a, a, kind of a mini-symposium. Um, I believe that was in March or April at the library, and we invited the lodging, Kelly was there in the state, and the forms were there. You know, Brent and Greg didn't realize that, that's part of what had been done, so I passed that on. So we let them know, but we, um, when we first formed, we let everybody know. So just even sending it in general letter to advise them.
So, I'm a little confused, 'cause I think we're going off on tangents, but maybe, and I'm not telling you what to do, but maybe the tourism board ought to put something in the paper, stating that if you have any room in your home that you're renting out to any person, you must comply with the law.
Right.
And maybe you could give a notification to that. You being the police department, whether they do or do not, I don't think that's really your, I don't think that's your position. I think it is appropriate for you to tell Kelly, Kelly to take, tell the Treasury Department of Revenue, whoever it is, and let them handle it, but I think, I don't feel I have any problem whatsoever if the tourism board says, if you in any form or fashion rent out any space to third parties in your home, you must comply with the law.
Mm-hmm.
And here's where you find them, some kind of notice, I mean, I would, I would favor that.
Yeah.
And I'll see Kelly for a form or whatever.
When, when we first, when we first started, 'cause, you know, I was involved, I'm kind of out, and, um, Cindy, Christie, Eltri and I all worked together and we had a form letter to educate people about the tourism board. And it was basically just letting people know, you probably don't know about this, and it wasn't saying...
That's why I'm suggesting something in the paper, because I agree, Kelly made the comment earlier and I agree with her completely, some people just may not know that they're supposed to do this, and...
That's fair.
I, I give people a lot of credit, and I think they go, well, I didn't realize how to do that, let me start doing that, so.
What is, what is confusing, then, it's not her job, or ours, somebody has to, how do you follow up and know that somebody's actually did it? You know, the state sends out the notice, then how do we know they're paying? I know, it's the same issue, how do you enforce this silly thing?
It's very sloppy, so as we find them, we can do something, but if we give notice, at least they put on notice that you are responsible for following certain procedures if you plan on entering into this form of, of business.
I wonder if the, the notice also could say something like, uh, and, uh, how do you, she makes the notice to the states, says this address is now, needs to have notice it hasn't been practiced, whatever it is, uh, and once it's complied with, how, how do you know?
Well, I'm thinking, I'm thinking if you put something to pay or say...
How do we get it up on them to, to ensure that they check with Kelly that it went through the system or something?
And then we don't know.
No, we know, but what we could have said in the notices, you know, pick up the form, then send, Kelly will deal with it, could check with the clerk at some point.
Please contact the tourism board or the clerk, however you want to.
Wouldn't be the tourism board, 'cause they can't know that they didn't pay it, but she could, it's a...
Yeah, but they could tell her what the procedure is.
Well, it's just a simple, it's just a simple, basic letter, you know, if they think you comply, here's the form, and just helped them out, we just, I just downloaded the PDF and gave the guidelines, because if they stay up, stay for a certain period of time, it's longer, then they don't charge the tax.
See, they're gonna have to know they're taking, they're, they need to charge the tax and the form to process to do that, so then you could check back with the clerk to make sure that you got the right process to, I mean, that could, that's a legal thing to do, it seems to me, you know?
Yeah, it's just, it was just something that...
Make sure that they put it on them to follow up, it's on their, as a citizen responsibility to follow up with you.
And, and I do know in checking with the state in the past, we're not a big area concern for them to bring people out, you know, we just, you know, unless they happen to maybe want to do a combination of Werfino County, us, you know, um, Los Angeles maybe, and, and send somebody out that way, but we are getting a lot more tax than what we used to, also lodging tax when it comes to ups and downs. It's not all based on tourism. Part of it depends on if they're doing highway construction, you got people staying in hotels and motels. If there's a fire, you got pros and cons, sometimes tourism isn't coming, but the workers are, are people for...
But I, I think the majority of, of VRBOs and veteran workers and all that is a tourism issue.
Right.
They're coming for that, and I grant you that, you know, I had a wedding, a lot of people filled up all of the VRBOs, it was not a, it was not a tourism thing. However, I, I feel it would be an appropriate place for you, your board of course, to, um, make that notification to the public, telling them that there are requirements for this other than you're just in business, that you must meet certain legal requirements.
And one thing I have to disagree with you on the wedding, as far as it not being tourism thing, as a business owner, which I get a whole different aspect.
And I may, I...
Yeah, I just want to say...
I was just giving out an example.
What is tourist activity?
Some people may come in and...
They come in shops.
That's not the point, but I think the majority is a tourism industry, and for your board to put out a notice in the publication newspaper, you know, if you are doing this, please make sure that you comply with the law, I think is an appropriate thing to do.
Right.
So let me ask Kelly a question. So, once you know, let's say, however you find out somebody hadn't been paying it and you notify the state, you have a list of your own that says, I could be looking for these guys to be paying the tax, do you get away of seeing that they did pay the tax? Okay, so then, then that would be up on you, and the, the only enforcement we have would be she could just resend the notice back to the state, right, that they hadn't complied this year, right?
Yeah.
And you probably should do that, because to make sure they keep sending the enforcement letters to the people.
Yeah. And I asked them that one time, you know, how, how do you know, I mean, I mean, do you follow up, and they said, really, we just sent them out one notice?
Right, so you, you could, you could force them to push another one.
Maybe if, yeah, maybe if I kept bugging them.
I mean, what would happen if nobody did it, I mean, no, you just let it ride, that person skates for the rest of his life.
Yeah. Yeah, and the other thing, and you and I might have talked about that after that meeting at the library, is, 'cause I think that you, you, they talked about it at a conference or something, about how to control, how to know that everybody, that there are, uh...
Complying?
Yeah, and that, do you do that through zoning or something so that everybody, everybody is on the same page? They, they, they know...
You could, I mean, that seems like a logical thing.
Do you have a lot of your retirees that are here part-time and they're VBO, but now with the state stating that if you're under VBO, that all that stuff is, or the Airbnbs, is automatically taken out? So, and it didn't used to be like that, so, so that's really a good thing.
Right, that's the comment I had with, one of the comments, was if it's a registered Airbnb, uh, HomeAway, VRBO, those supposedly, if it's registered in one of those businesses, then, then they automatically register to pay that tax.
I think Airbnb's the only one that automatically takes that.
HomeAway and VRBO doesn't.
I don't think they do.
Yeah, I think VBO is borderline, but when you get online, you need to look for that. A lot of the VBOs are also Airbnb, you know, they have them on there. They're duplicate.
I just looked, Airbnb or HomeAway and VRBO, Custer County, Colorado, there happened to be forty of each listed. I would think it would be wise for the tourism board to reach out to those people and ask them of that same letter, are you paying the two percent lodging tax?
That's basically...
Are you admitting that?
What, what I'm saying, up till about a year ago, they had the addresses for everybody, thought, oh, I can go on and I can check that out, 'cause some of them I know, I look at the home and I go, oh, that's so-and-so's place. But now it's all Google and they don't give an address at all, 'cause at least I had a way to go on and contact the people. So, um, so that's some work.
Yeah, but we know, uh, if they're in business, you'll be able to find their address, 'cause they, they don't get anybody to come if they don't let...
No, you have to actually go in and apply that you are going to be...
Make a reservation.
Make a reservation.
Exactly, that's how, but it didn't used to be, it had actually an address, and I'm going, okay, they got smart there and...
My thinking was it's incumbent upon who to do this. In my mind, it would be tourism board, because it's a self, uh, fulfilling deal, that's where the money comes back, and so I, I don't know that the commissioners can mandate that, that tourism board does, but I think it would be something we could sure...
Well, that was in part of our thing that we did, it's just, you know, it's just, I think every other year or once a year, you just, it's just a nice, simple letter, hey, it's just more than I...
So quickly leave your hand, you're gonna go ahead and do that.
Okay, we'll go back.
You're absolutely right.
Okay.
It is incumbent upon them, we can ask them if they're doing their job, if they're working for us.
So then Plan B, um, we have, um, I have a letter, which I don't have with me, because I carried it with me last week trying to see you and you, and I don't know what I did with it, but it states that my term is for three years, and it's signed by all three of you guys. So, that was Friday's last I had at my hand when I went to see you, and I don't know what vehicle's in, a lot's happened.
So we have to ask...
Well, we can find it if it's...
So, so, so...
Give me an overview of what the issue is.
So, so...
Ask them and do that.
Okay, so basically what we have is term limits coming up, um, which, all of a sudden we have three, which never, we've never had three before and we shouldn't, um, openings, we should have two at a time. And, um, my question is, is mine for the three or is it for a lesser term? According to the bylaws, um, November first, I should have sent out a, a le-, a public request for letters of interest. I had stuck my set December first, because, you know, I wasn't up on the bylaws with everything else going. December, or November the eighth, I saw it and go, oh dang, and I got it into the paper, got it to be on Facebook, so the letter went out there. Um, and it had to be in by December first. So, um, the letters of interest plus a resume along with it. The only letters that have come in is basically a letter from Deb saying she's interested, there was no resume. We did not receive anything from Peggy, um, even though she was requested by two people. We still have a Jennifer that's out there, that's interested, I've talked with her three times, so, and, and we'll be coming back for her.
How does your board want to handle this?
Um, well, first of all, what it is, is at our November meeting, after you left, um, I'd already been pre-worn by one of our board members that a couple of the ladies were basically after me, and, um, they didn't like my, um, uh, thing in regards to the commissioners, well, I've had to come before you guys a lot, you tell me what I should be doing, but that doesn't mean I might agree with you, so, you know, we work together, and so they don't like that relationship there. So at the meeting, they approved Deb's letter, even though the timeline wasn't even here.
Hold on a second, when you say it was approved, is approved by a majority vote of the members of your board?
For her to, for her letter of interest, which the time wasn't here.
I'm having a little angst here. I don't want to micromanage your, your board, and I don't think the other commissioners want to either, although I don't want to speak for them. These sound like issues that need to come before your board, and a majority vote will rule as to how you're going to handle these issues coming, and, and I'm sorry to say that, but I mean, we don't, we don't micromanage the boards.
Right now, what we have is a hornet's nest, basically.
We have what?
A hor-, I call it a hornet's nest, so...
We've been in this position with this tourism board for a very long time.
A couple of years, yes.
No, for a very long time, we, we made a major change a while back, um, which was unpopular, but we felt it was gonna help get the problems with this tourism board under control so that it can function like every other board or committee that we have in the county, in terms of your self-regulating, you, you regulate by majority vote. If there is issues that the board needs the, the commissioners involved in, then obviously it's come for, a change in your budget would obviously come before.
Right.
But the management of your board, I think that's your board's decision.
Okay.
And Angie, I just pulled up Peggy Collins's email on October the seventh to you, with her resume.
Oh, yes, it finally came in.
No, finally, it's on October the seventh, that's...
September is when she first sent it?
Doesn't matter, you put a notice in the paper looking for it, you've got a resume.
I'm having a real problem here.
So, you, you guys just gotta get your act together.
Okay, no, no, okay, put our act together, and, and we'll do that. I will say that December first is, was, was not even here in November, when they were making votes, the cart before the horse, so, um...
If I could just continue, Angie, I've publicly said at least twice how much I appreciate what you have done to keep the tourism board in operation when there were no other members.
Right.
You, it would have been very easy for you to say, I'm outta here. You didn't do that, I'll commend you a third time today publicly going, thank you for doing that.
Okay, that's fine.
But now, hang on a second, but now that you have a functioning board, the board needs to make decisions, and if they decide that there's gonna be changes that don't meet Angie's agenda, that's, they're right, in a, in a majority vote, I mean, that's how boards operate.
Okay, I can think my key is, do we have a functioning board? And that's my thing, so, we will take that up in our next meeting, um, because it is not...
Who do you think's on your board now?
Pardon me?
Do you have four or five, how many people?
Well, it depends on, on how you look at it. Peggy didn't send her stuff in.
She's got it there, cutting out.
Is she a board member or not?
She's a board member or not?
Till the end, till the end, uh...
That's right.
Right.
She is a board member.
She's a board member, it depends.
Every member voting her...
I thought you did.
Her term is up in January, she needs to resubmit.
She resubmit.
And she didn't as of December first, so...
Talk with her.
You know, I have.
I know she's in Singapore right now.
Yeah, so...
So the tourism board, according to our records, not my records, it's our records, Peggy, yourself, Debbie Adams, and Renee Smith is coming up.
It's Charlie?
Yeah.
No, Charlie's in point two twenty.
Marla's is, she is, I'd love to clone her, um, I have basically kind of shown her where things are, because...
Marla's is twenty-one.
Right, and stuff.
She's not on, she's not up for discussion.
No, I'm just saying, a positive thing.
Uh, four terms expire...
Right.
In December of nineteen, of eighteen.
And we would expect that, that board has been qualified, they had resumes in, and so when they come up, it's up to them to say, okay, I'm gonna go put my name back into the hat, I don't want to be unworn, I don't know...
But what Angie's saying, and I agree with her, they need to file that procedure.
They need to file.
They have it, and we follow up with them and say, are you, are you not? If you do not, you are not qualified to serve in the future. And, and I concur with you, that procedure needs to be filed, you don't set the procedure and ignore it for some people you like better than others.
So they go out and get them on the, on the stick?
Well, but I also have some new people, um, Carla is one, you know, that...
Get them all on the stick?
That, well, yeah, so it took a year...
If they're not.
But, you know, took a year and a half for Marla's, you know, and, you know, she has, um, we've got a brand-new possible business owner, um, I think Jay knows that, I'm meeting her later, and I think she's gonna apply for it, which means it'll have to be, you know, by the end of December, when the board puts out a call for letters of interest for the different boards and stuff, so...
To care of business.
We took care of it.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just...
We support the tourism board immensely.
Right.
We don't support dysfunctionality. Procedure's important, that's why we establish it. If someone's not following the procedure, they need to be kind of pushed and reminded file procedure, if they just flat refuse and they don't apply...
They don't want to be on, they don't have that, it's the assumption.
So, I'm a little frustrated, I don't know where we're going right now.
No, that's fine, you, you've answered my questions, I didn't want to go further. I just want to advise, main thing was budget, um, we have the one, um, item, and, um... Um, we have the one, um, item and, um, that's fine because I don't wanna be a minor or whatever, but.
Nailed it, you don't wanna be, I get it.
Yes, but it is a hornet's nest and, um, at least I knew where I was with the other. The common denominator is, I've asked questions and it doesn't sit with the other board. We're now having to pay for things if they would've at least listened on revamping our website. And, and now, so, um, we're fine, I, I can deal with it.
Well, I think you have to let the process work itself out. I think that's what Commissioner Prince is saying. Uh, we will deal with whatever, I agree, uh, we will not deal with dysfunctionality to our ability. Uh, so if there are issues and they come before this board, we'll deal with them. If we feel there are issues, we may bring them before this board.
Right.
Uh, I think.
I'm just trying to diplomatically say.
Okay, well, we're aware that there may be an amended budget coming before the board.
Right.
Uh, and we'll proceed with that. On another note, I would ask the tourism board to reach out to Vista Works.
Oh.
We're having issues with them and, and dealing with the funds that we are sending to them currently, so.
And, and thank you for, because I did have that down on my list, cause I also spent a good part of the day tracking down, cause I remembered signing the vouchers for that. And Canyon Brenda had also done the same thing, so our figures were the same. Um, there's times we've had to do replacement checks for them, it's just frustrating.
That's not acceptable.
We also have an invoice that's in from them. I told Brenda, we're holding on because I want clarification. We're already paying them X amount here, a thousand.
Doing that, I appreciate you.
And I don't understand why this additional, when this is being happening, when I questioned what Amy's doing.
Good management, that's exactly what she's doing.
Well, and I would ask you.
Well, it's not setting well with the board, so, that's just the way it is.
Vista Works and say, you know, the board of county commissioners are getting tired of reissuing these checks. If you can't handle your finances, we will find another company. Vista Works is sure as hell not the only company in Colorado that deals with this. I have talked to them, I will talk to them again.
Where are they?
But, needs to start with the tourism board.
Right, and, and I did send a letter, um, Brenda sent one out too. Um, Charlie knows, he's fully aware. He didn't know the past history in regards to them as far as their checks not cashing.
And that's the one thing, not the one thing, the many things you bring, but that is one of the important things that you bring to the neophytes, and I don't mean that in a negative term.
No.
The new people coming on who don't have history, you can give them that history, which is so important. But then when ultimately they understand what the procedure is and what's going on and what the issues are and they vote, that's the way it's gonna have to be.
You know, that I am totally fine on. It's when they're not new, not even having been to a new board meeting and all of a sudden they've gathered, they don't know the procedure and they're making decisions before they fully understand, you know. We went through a grant process, which I was really proud of the results, you were there for at least that part. And, you know, hopefully all five of them will be acknowledged at Tuesday's meeting and receive them all because that was a lot of hard work, working with them, but that's the most we've ever had people apply.
Yes, you have some.
Yeah, just.
It's Tuesday, Tuesday.
We go back to where we were eight months ago, I guarantee you, I'm gonna get on the fight. So Tuesday, the eleventh?
Yes, sir, at nine o'clock.
At when?
Nine o'clock.
And where is that?
Here.
So it's still being here.
States in our bylaws, this is where it's at.
What day?
Eleventh.
What day?
Tuesday.
Eleven.
December eleventh.
Oh, I'm a gentleman.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I'm already going.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah. And stuff, so, if you appreciate your time.
Angie, don't give up the fight, Anna, I, I feel your frustration. And me not saying, putting my arm around you and going, Andy, let me coddle you. I just can't do this. What I have to do is let your board function as it's your board. I feel your frustration, I've complimented you multiple times, sticking it out, work with them and make it a good board.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do. My frustration is, based on what some of your concerns were of some of them behind the scenes, you've got Greg and Brent working them and.
Greg and Brent are out.
Oh, no, they're not.
What?
You know, no, they're not.
Officially, they are out.
Yes, they are.
Doesn't mean they can't have influence like anybody else.
Well, they are, so.
I understand Charlie is close to both of us.
Thank you for coming in, I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Angie, I will work with you and I will help you.
And I just.
Now?
Yeah, not before, thank you.
Staying, and thanks for your time.
You're welcome, thank you for being patient. I'm gonna go after burgers today.
I moved.
No, I couldn't get them skipped. Oh, uh, sir, I have one other item of business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that.
Don't mind me drawing that motion.
I, I withdrew my motion, I thought we were done.
No.
I didn't hear it, so it didn't matter.
Oh, good. I asked Brenda to contact Donna and have her come over so we can have a conversation with her today.
She's here, she was.
She wasn't here.
Yeah, she was, and she left. About this amended budget coming before. And how we handle that, I don't know how to handle it.
Tourism board?
Yes.
We don't understand what that means, Tom, because it sounds like to me, you can amend your budget, we gave them a budget to work with, they can fool with that internally. If that's what it means, cause she wasn't clear.
Is she coming over?
Are they trying to come and tell us they need more money?
She didn't answer her phone.
Okay.
She probably.
Maybe she's on her way.
They, they know better than to come and spend, unless they wanna ask it more, how could they even be thinking about that?
I'll tell you where it's coming, they're anticipating greater revenue.
Right.
So they wanna adjust the budgets, take a cop.
Right.
So what, right, right?
That's right.
It doesn't matter, cause they can't spend it if they don't get it and they can be prepared to go spend it on something if they get it. I mean, that's up to them to, to work internally, but if they think they gotta come to us because they want more than what they've got.
No, cause I don't.
It's isn't gonna happen, they can't.
That's why, oh, come on.
I want to hear what's going on, I mean, you know.
Yeah, no, that was.
Any organization come in and say, we under budgeted, we need more money for something and we have the right to agree or disagree.
Yeah. Right, but if it's just amending their budget internally because they don't like what they had proposed, that's up to them to argue about, not.
Welcome back.
That was easy, I was talking to Ron.
Okay.
There you go.
And then I saw that you weren't, and so, uh, Angie informed us that the tourism board may bring a request to amend their budget in the next foreseeable future, here in the next month. So, um, I asked Brenda to contact you so we can have a conversation with you about number one, what's that process like?
Those are the supplementals.
Okay. And would it be normal to do a supplemental budget in January? Typically, across the board, county business.
Ordinarily, no.
Okay.
Because you've not spent anything or done anything yet.
Start of the new year.
And you've not gotten in the extra revenues yet.
Uh, this is a little different because this is a lodging tax that supports the tourism board. Uh, I think the commissioners, I'm, I believe, I should, let me restate that. I believe we should get the year up and running and find out, we don't know what their revenue stream's gonna be. I would expect an amended budget, but certainly not in January or February. I mean, they got fifty-five thousand dollars in their budget, we budgeted that.
But yeah, that ordinarily, you just don't because you don't know.
Don't know.
If you bought one thing, you might not need the other thing, or, yeah, it just would be.
Now, technically.
I think we're premature here.
I do too, but I wanted to have this conversation today. I don't think this conversation's, you know, premature.
Amending budget conversation is certainly not premature. I think tourism board absolutely is, we don't have any idea what they're gonna ask, what they want, how they wanna do, or what it is. And we just, we would just put on notice that they're talking about changing their budget. That's all we know at this point.
Right.
The conversation about what is the procedure on amended budgets, that's a whole different animal.
That's what I'm asking, so technically, what is the process? They would come, request an amended budget or present us with an amended budget. We'd vote on that to accept it or reject it, correct?
Correct, because you have to sign the supplemental or the revision for that. Um, that being said, you wouldn't be revising or changing something that was already existing if they hadn't spent it or there was no money, so.
And they can project and plan and do all that all they want.
So if they, if their budget.
They come to us.
Yes.
If their budget, this is what I suspect would happen, but again, this is a little premature. But I wanna think this through, and the only time we can do it is sitting at this table. If their budget's fifty-five thousand dollars, which we just approved, and they anticipate a larger revenue stream, I'll make up a number, sixty-five thousand, so they wanna amend their budget to sixty-five thousand based on projected revenues, is that reasonable?
Yes, but only if they're expending it. The whole reason for a budget is that you can't spend more than what you budgeted. So if in the reality, they were only spending fifty-five thousand, but they thought fit sixty-five, they would bring in the other ten, it would go into their fund balance, they didn't overspend the fifty-five. There's nothing that needs to be changed.
Or if they came on a windfall, all of a sudden there's a jillion people showed up and they got a lot more money in a month, they can, they can, they can spend it.
Yeah, that they would have.
Right now, the only authority to spend is up to fifty-five thousand bucks.
Correct.
We've got an authority to go beyond.
If they anticipate that windfall, is that enough to amend the budget? We think we're gonna get more money this year.
We, we don't care about, um, the revenue. I mean, we, we have what's anticipated, but is, and, but we could, we could garner eight times that. And we're good, it's the expenditure that changes the budget.
We actually did, that's what our budget was built on, was anticipation.
So, I, I guess backdoor that, I'm assuming they're gonna come with increased expenses based on their anticipated increase in revenue.
And they have to show why they think that and all that.
And, and why, um, and, well, and it's just, I would never do that and probably until the, toward the end, because that's.
Always increasing.
Yeah, that's, that's when the money has come through that they're, because they might change their mind or not, and why do a supplemental?
They can plan for it.
Well, we actually had part of this discussion during the budget hearings. They came at us with a number that they thought they were gonna re- generate revenue, we didn't agree with that. So we pared the budget down a little bit.
Well, and, and who's to say that, because it, their revenues were higher. But who's to say that everyone who has an Airbnb said, this isn't worth it to go through this paperwork? And it goes right back to where it was prior because the paperwork is the bummer part, nobody cares that they're having to pay it, they just don't wanna deal with the paper.
On top of month by month, you can stay in within budget, so you don't overspend something you haven't got.
Okay, so the process is, they certainly can bring that to us for consideration.
Correct.
And would you feel you need to be involved in that?
Yes.
She would like to know, so she can put it in her system by hand.
Yeah, so I can take the time to get all that.
I'm not gonna amend the budget without our budget officer sitting there going, hang on a second, man, for how she needs to know.
On there, but those are.
Right, cause it's a little different cat to skin with the tourism board versus.
Yeah, cause I have the separate.
Number one, we don't know.
Separate revenue.
We're not funding their budget.
Ruin Brady so much.
So.
But, you know, there's no use, um, you guys doing something that needed, need not be changed if it never had, the expenses weren't over.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, ma'am, that's answered my questions, gentlemen.
Oh, good.
Thank you for coming back in, appreciate it. Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Easy peasy.
Top over there, it's Chris wanted to come in at nine o'clock tomorrow.
Nine o'clock, oh.
I know. Okay.
You're not gonna run away right away, are you?
Public comment.
Next door.
Okay, but you'll be around for ten minutes.
No, thanks.
Yes.
Other than the birds, I've already, I've, I've already said, you know, I mean, I'm reading their little signs. So I think that's probably all I need to say.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say a special thank you to Donna and Brenda for the extra help that they have been doing. I called Brenda, I mean Donna, yesterday, cause I didn't have this one. She's in the Navy and I said, next week's fine, I just went up on my files, you know, and just